Okay, so the video has started recording.
All right, I got four, I got four twenty-nine.
Yeah.
I forgot what I was doing.
You were setting the sound up. I believe.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Okay, folks, it is four thirty. Time for our meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the Commissioner's Room. Roll call, please.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
I guess we could have done that with our little buttons.
I don't have that on there.
Okay. All rise for Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes, modifications?
I'd move approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Record your votes, please.
Hang on, I've got to open the vote for you.
Let me know when. Now we can vote?
Now you can vote.
All right, please record your votes. What's the result of the votes, Kelly?
I need one more.
We're pressing the green, red, and yellow buttons.
You're not, I think you're on. There we go.
Everybody in? Okay.
Are you number two?
Result of the votes, Kelly? Kelly, the result of the votes?
Voting yes. Reizig, Blue, Meyer, Harris, Knapper.
Thank you. Want, remind everybody that the Board does reserve the right to enter into a closed session anytime we feel that it's necessary. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Anybody want, anybody remove from the consent agenda? If not, it'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion? Record your votes.
Hang on, who was my motion? I'm sorry.
I made the motion.
Thank you. Okay, we're open.
Result of the, of the voting? Does it pass?
No, we got it. Voting yes, Reizig, Blue, Meyer, Harris, and Knapper.
Motion passes? Need a motion to move into the Board of Equalization?
I'll move to move into Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Record your votes. Did the motion carry?
Yes.
Thank you. Heather?
Hi.
There you are.
So I have one vehicle exemption this evening for Summit Christian College. This vehicle is a renewal. It's a 2011 Ford Econoline van. These vehicles are used to transport students and faculty to and from churches into college functions. I would recommend approval.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the exemption.
Second.
We have a motion, we do have a second. Is there any other discussion? Record your votes. Ms. Clerk, did the motion pass?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a motion to receive the tax list corrections.
I'll move to receive the tax list corrections.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes. Result of the voting?
We're not done.
Kelly? Have one more?
One more. This is number four.
Me? I pushed it once. Probably that. Did it record this time?
Yes.
Okay.
And it passed.
And it passed, thank you.
Oh, yeah, yes.
All right, need a motion to come out of Board of Equalization?
I'll move to exit Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I had a question.
Yes.
So are there buttons one, two, three, four, and five, Kelly?
Yes.
Just right down the road?
Yep.
Starting one on this side.
Who was my second, please?
Blue.
One starts on this side, is that correct?
No.
Oh, so one's over here?
No. Okay, it's by your district. I thought that was a pretty smart way to set it up.
That's pretty cool. That is a good way to set it up.
Now, now-
I could be wrong.
Now, now, now that we know, I, we didn't know. Okay, thank you. Okay? Uh, moving on to general agenda items.
Did we need-
Oh, okay.
Did we vote on coming out of Board of Equalization?
Yes, we did.
We have a first and a second.
We have a first and a second, and we voted.
I have not.
Recorded it.
I don't have anything for leaving the Board of Equalization for a vote.
We're ready for a vote.
Call the vote. Record your vote. I'll get it sooner or later. Keep it moving.
Okay, we've got them all.
Result of the voting? It passed?
Voting, mm, yes, is Blue, Meyer, Harris, Knapper, and voting no, I have Reizig.
I want to see if that thing will put a red line on it.
Moving on to general agenda items. Discuss and consider approval for a resolution for the County Bus Capital Improvement Fund, 2201. Heather?
Okay, so if you guys will remember, a couple weeks ago, I was up here with Kurt, and he explained why they need that, um, fund number, um, 2201 to add the capital improvement fund for the county bus. So this is just a resolution to approve that fund. Did you want me to read the resolution in full, or?
I think we all have copies of it here.
Okay.
If the press wants, if they can get a copy and put it into the- Okay?
Is there any other discussion on it, or any questions anybody has?
I would, I would entertain a motion for either approval or denial, please.
I'll move to approve the resolution.
We have a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Now we'll open it up for discussion or questions.
This is just what we discussed before.
It's what you discussed.
Formalizes-
Yeah, we're just, yeah, we're just ratifying our discussion, basically. Okay? Any other questions, concerns? Record your vote. Did the vote pass?
Yes.
Okay.
Five to zero.
Next item is receive update from KCTS on expanding available services into Scottsbluff County.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me to give you our updates. I did provide a PowerPoint, and I'm not one to read them to you. So I will go through them as you, um, I just wanted to let you guys know.
You, you are Christie, I assume?
I am Christie Warner. I'm the administrator at KCTS.
We just need that for the record.
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
And I did want to just let you know that I do have my Commissioner Carl Sander here, as my direct Commissioner over the transit for Kimball County.
Very good. Welcome, Carl.
We have been expanding. I don't know, some of you may or may not know, but we started as one bus and one driver in 2017. And we are currently at thirteen vehicles, and I have thirty employees as of today. And what we're looking for is not only what we're doing today, but we're preparing for the next several years as we do our grant application, just similar to Tri-City Roadrunner. And so I just kind of wanted to give you guys a little heads up on what we're doing and to speak to you about building some partnerships between Kimball County and Scottsbluff County. So we do have, of course, the, everybody's aware of the military project coming into town, and Clean Harbors is our largest employer, and they do, are doing some large expansions. And then we've been working with the Scottsbluff Airport as well, and we already provide transportation to and from your Scottsbluff Airport from other communities such as Sidney, Kimball, Sanola Lodge Bowl, all of those. Our military project, as you well are aware, we've got about thirty-seven hundred people up to at one point coming into town. They are, the, they're about to break ground this summer, according to them. We won't see all of those people all at once, and we don't know how they'll spend their money. But what we do know is there's three thousand living units and only six hundred and fifty parking spots. So they're not intended to have vehicles. So we are working to make sure that we're prepared to handle that on top of our normal growth that we're seeing. As far as Clean Harbors, they have four hundred and fifty employees currently. They're building their second incinerator, and so they expect, between that second and incinerator, and they're putting in a rail spur. They have let us know that they plan to be the national hub, like Kimball will be their national hub. So we expect them to be close to doubling their employee status. So if you add another four hundred employees, they can't all live in Kimball, and we know that. We know that they'll be living in other areas. Scottsbluff is a very likely area for some of those employees to live. But some of the concerns are how do we get them, employees, to work? And so that is where KCTS is partnering with Clean Harbors as well.
Christie?
Yeah?
Can you go back to the, to the last one?
Sure, absolutely.
On the military expansion?
Yeah.
Somebody was telling me, or I was talking to somebody, they were talking about what the total number was, but it was going to be like a rotating number of employees. Do you, did you hear that same thing, or?
So, yeah, so the way it is, is they will, there's a couple things to this. There's actually a lot of aspects. So if you read the eighteen hundred pages of the EIS, there's a lot of information. So first and foremost, there's different ways that they can put that housing hub in, right? It can be self-sufficient, or it doesn't have to be. It's up to the county and the city to decide how that works. If there's infrastructure available, great, they'd love to tap into infrastructure. If there's not, such as when they get up to the tribal areas and the tribal areas don't want it, they can be self-sufficient. The employees will work twelve-hour shifts, and so those are really long days. They will have a cafeteria and like a little shopette. I don't know how many are in the, have ever been to a military shopette, but it's, it's like a small convenience store. And so they'll work twelve, twelve-hour shifts. They are not on lockdown, but they will be exhausted and tired. So you, as you can imagine, they may or may not want to come off to eat that night. You might want to be in the cafeteria, or you might want to come out for a burger and beer, who knows? They do have days off, and so we know that they'll come in to the activity centers, such as Scottsbluff, to do some of those things on their days off. And they will rotate, so they won't be three thousand all at once. You know, they're not going to bring buses in and just drop off three thousand employees. They'll actually build, depending on exactly what stage they're in. They have thousands of miles worth of lines to lay, so they'll build up to that. And I think actually the last number I heard was more like twenty-seven hundred, but the difference between twenty-seven hundred and three thousand in Kimball, Nebraska is insignificant. And so that'll be at the max capacity. They'll get up to that number. But it'll be different amounts at different times during the construction. And then they'll rotate in and out. They have already mentioned here in Scottsbluff at the, at the PTAC meeting that they had a couple months back, that there's actually about two hundred employees that would be living off the housing hub. Now, obviously, they're not going to be in Kimball, I would assume. We don't have two hundred houses for somebody to live in. So you'll see that other communities will absorb that. And obviously, Kimball cannot maintain that kind of amount of people. I mean, that's more than doubles Kimball. So I'm sure that we'll see a lot of overflow into the activity centers such as Sidney, Scottsbluff, and Cheyenne, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Absolutely. Any other questions, I guess, before I move forward on that?
Move forward. I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. We're here to answer all those. So, you know, Clean Harbors is our permanent employer. Obviously, when you start an incinerator, you don't get to shut one down just because, so they'll be there long, long term. The rail spur is obviously a big piece as well. So we know that, again, if they bring in even half of that four hundred, we don't have two hundred houses for somebody to stay in. So there is just some employee versus housing disparities. And while we do have some housing getting ready to be built, that takes time. And so while that's happening, transportation is pretty important to get people back and forth. Any questions on Clean Harbors before I move forward? Have you seen their-
You made, you made the comment, and we all know, you don't have the housing.
We don't have the housing.
To cover both this and the military. So you're going to be looking outside of your community for housing, I'm assuming.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and transportation to those, which is what kind of this is all, all about.
Absolutely.
All right, I got, I got you. I got you covered here.
All right.
Thank you.
Perfect. Just as we know that all of those things are happening, we want to make sure that we're working really closely with both the federal, state, and local partners. And Scottsbluff is one of those partners. We work even now with Tri-City Roadrunner. We want to make sure that we're, um, we never try to take away any riders from Tri-City Roadrunner. We do come into Scottsbluff to drop our people off. We have picked up people. We currently have phases. So we've started our airport transportation from anywhere from Scottsbluff down to DIA. So goes Scottsbluff, Kimball, Fort Morgan, DIA, back and forth. We worked with your Scottsbluff Airport to make sure that we're filling the needs that maybe they can't fill, right? There's certain times and different price points for people. Those vehicles, we've got new vehicles coming. They're a ten-passenger Ford Transit with captain seats, USB chargers, cup holders, individual air, Wi-Fi, to make that three-hour trip more, you know, feasible. I did speak with Kevin Stocker of the Denver Coach to ensure that we weren't stepping on any private ability to provide that transportation, and he assured us that there wouldn't be anything against, you know, the Stagecoach, or, no, I'm sorry, not the Stagecoach, Denver Coach. You know, we just want to make sure that we were being good partners. So that's already started, and we've seen a huge, huge increase. We took ninety-two people to the airport last fiscal year, and just from November one to December thirty-first, we took four hundred and fifty-seven rides to the Denver Airport and back, through the blizzards, by the way. So.
So that's from Scottsbluff also?
Oh, Scottsbluff. A lot of them were first come.
The whole area. Gotcha.
Mm-hmm, the whole area. Yeah, so a huge need that we're filling there. The next piece is we're getting ready to start some of our Scottsbluff to Kimball and back and forth. We're going to do a routed, a flex route service between Kimball and Scottsbluff, and then a flex route service between Kimball and Sidney. We're going to make sure that those times overlap, so that if somebody from Sidney needs to get to Scottsbluff, right, they can meet that bus in Kimball and jump onto the next bus and, and come up to Scottsbluff, because we bring a lot of people from Sidney, Gurley, Sanola.
What's the, what's the cost to ride from Kimball to Scottsbluff?
On a, the on-demand service, so from Kimball to Scottsbluff, on-demand is twenty-five dollars each round trip currently. On the routed service, it's going to be five dollars a day, or fifty dollars for a monthly pass. So you can't even fill up your tank of gas for fifty bucks.
Oh, that's pretty, okay.
But we, the idea is to take a little bit of the stress off of our on-demand service and really put them on the flex route vehicles, which are more efficient. And then after that, we'll be working with our internal Kimball circulation. We're going to do a checkpoint service, and I'll talk about that in just a second. And then we're really working with our employers to make sure, we currently already take employees from Scottsbluff right now, today, from two Clean Harbors into the hospital there in Kimball currently. So we're definitely working to make sure that we can handle those things for the employers. This is just some of our statistics. A lot of people don't understand. We've, we've gone from about seven thousand rides five years ago. We had twenty-seven thousand last year, and we're about to top thirty thousand at this rate for this fiscal year. Those are huge jumps, significant jumps. I think if Tri-City did that kind of jump, you guys would be crying just a little bit, but we're, we're just trying to help out our service areas. And we have eighteen vehicles, once those six come in, in March, March thirty-first. Just to kind of let you know, we go all the way from Cheyenne to North Platte, and then Scottsbluff all the way down to DIA. So that's both our on, that's our on-demand service. And of course, the routed services will be, currently, we won't go as far as North Platte with our on-demand, I mean, I'm sorry, our routed service yet, but there is long-term plans for that. And so just to let you know, from Scottsbluff to Kimball, your guys' route is the Skyline Route, because we have a beautiful sky headed this direction. And that will start, actually, the ribbon cutting will stop open on April tenth, but the ribbon cutting is April twelfth for that route. So we'll be ready to go with that. And you'll see the, the buses. Our DIA route, of course, again, where we've got two, morning and night, that are already running. Again, Skyline is to Scottsbluff, Sunline is to Sidney.
Do you actually go into Harrisburg, or do you just meet out on the road out there?
So on-demand, we'll go into the county. So we cover, for on-demand, we'll cut, we cover all of Scottsbluff County, all of Banner County, Kimball County, Cheyenne County, and Dual County. So we go all out into the, for this corner of the county.
Do you pick up anywhere in the county?
Anywhere in the county. Now, the routes will stay on seventy-one and I-80.
So the, for the twenty-five-dollar fee, you'll go out to their house?
Yes.
For the five-dollar fee, it's going to stay on the highway?
Yes, that's correct. So the double L will be a flex stop right there. Absolutely. And we do have a few Harrisburg riders.
I just wanted, you included Harrisburg, and I didn't know how that, where you picked it up there.
Yeah.
So for, for the five-dollar fee, you pick them up at the highway, or how does that leave?
For the five-dollar fee-
Do you actually pull into Harrisburg to pick them up?
For the five dollars, it would be the double L there at Hilltop.
Oh, I got you. Okay, good. Yeah, that makes sense.
Um, just the checkpoint service is a new type of service that in the Panhandle, we haven't seen as often. And so checkpoint is just where we have certain times that we'll be at a certain stop, but after that, they don't have to stay on a route. They can deviate and go to drop somebody off at their house. And in Kimball, Nebraska, we still need that door-to-door service. And then just, you know, future needs with the Tri-City Roadrunner, we definitely, these routes are going to meet up at WNCC, at the hospital here, and at Walmart. And potentially, um, there, the Gearing Courthouse to have a stop here at the, at the courthouse is where we would meet up with Tri-City Roadrunner. During Tri-City Roadrunner's business hours, you know, we will help our riders get off and transfer onto Tri-City Roadrunner to go any other place, any other stops around town. And then there's the piece about the weekend service. So you guys don't have weekend service currently? And so, you know, we just wanted to talk about, we would still be here seven days a week. And so we wanted to make sure that we didn't step on toes, that we were, you know, making sure that we have the blessing of the Scottsbluff Commissioners to understand that we would be running our service seven days a week in Scottsbluff County, and make sure that we're on good terms with you guys, because at the end of the day, it's really about those partnerships. So while Tri-City Roadrunner isn't running, we'll still continue to, to run those services. There is a chance that, we haven't set up a, the fee structure yet for your Scottsbluff residents and what they would be charged to ride on our weekend service. But I did just want to kind of bring that to your attention. Answer any questions or get any feedback when it, when we talk about that kind of thing. You know, I would guess that we could potentially see WNCC students who would want to, you know, jump on and come down to Broadway or Gearing to get something to eat, things like that, or go over to Walmart. So just want to make sure that if you guys have questions or feedback about that, we'd love to address that with you guys as well. And then we run longer than the Tri-City Roadrunner, so we run from, currently, we have to leave at three o'clock in the morning to get up here by four-thirty to get back to Kimball in time to meet the employers' times with the hospital in Clean Harbors. So we're here long before Tri-City Roadrunner runs, and we end, um, we end at three o'clock in the morning as well. So we're, you'll see our buses long after your, your guys' service stops, but we do appreciate everything that the Tri-City Roadrunner has helped us out with. And we work together to make sure that, like, when you guys have holidays, Veterans Day, President's Day, we come up and take the Scottsbluff dialysis patients to dialysis for you guys, to make sure that they get to their dialysis. But again, we don't try to take them permanently. We have plenty of riders, so we hand those back to Tri-City Roadrunner once they're done. But that's what we're seeing. And so as you guys build a facility, one of the things that Kurt and I have discussed is, we don't see that happening today, nor do we see it actually in the near, near future. But as time goes on, there would be potential that we could cut a lot of deadhead and a lot of miles and hours off if there was any room to discuss maybe being able to park at one of your facility, park one vehicle at your facility that would leave before you guys open or close. And so that's just part of having that conversation as well, to see if there's any room to have that discussion as you guys move forward on your facility.
Christie, we're, we're pretty familiar with our funding for Scottsbluff County. Is it similar down there? Without getting into a whole bunch of details.
Yeah, yep, same, same grant.
Same stuff.
Mm-hmm, same stuff. We're doing it, we're going to be doing a little bit different in the sense of we're going to be selling, advertising on our buses to help with the matching funds, right? Because everybody, every county has, you know, heartburn over matching funds. So we work with, currently, we have the City of Chapel, Dual County, Kimball County, Buckley Trust. We get matching funds from lots of different pieces, but yes.
Is Scottsbluff the, the most northern stop that you do, or do you go beyond?
We only go beyond, we don't try to go beyond. We try to meet Panhandle Trails, which is now, um, Open Plains, thank you. They just changed their name. We do meet Open Plains here and transfer. So a lot of times, they've called us from Alliance or Shadrin to go down to Fort Collins and pick their loved one up, the God Flight for Life down there, and they're in a wheelchair, maybe. So we'll pick them up, bring them all the way to Scottsbluff, and they'll meet us in Scottsbluff and take them onto Alliance, Shadrin, Hemingford.
It's a lot of cooperation between the, actually, actually, between the three entities now.
Yep, yes, absolutely. And the idea would be that hopefully we could get all the way from one end of the state to the other, top to bottom, left to right. It's not quite that way yet, but that's where we're working towards. And we're all working on a trip planner to make that more convenient for like apps on a phone, so that somebody could get on and do that. Yeah, absolutely. So that, with that being said, you know, we just, we just wanted to see if there was any room for, um, for some cooperation in those areas. And as with any grant, a letter of support is always something that we look forward to if other communities are willing to, to partner. Whether that's just, yeah, we support you running your buses in our, in our area. You know, that's, that would just be helpful.
Well, it sounds like we're cooperating now.
Yes, you guys are doing a great job cooperating.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a matter of getting it, getting it done in writing.
Absolutely.
Well, I've, I've seen, I've seen the units. I've always wondered how they, and I've never really had time to have much of a conversation with Kurt about them all, but I, I appreciate the information.
Absolutely.
I think, I think we all do. Anybody have any questions?
When did you say they're going to start construction down in Kimball?
For- Sure. So the last we knew, we're expecting a, an letter of intent in May, but they said that they'll break ground on, so they have the Pioneer Camp and the Housing Hub. And the Pioneer Camp is basically what builds the Housing Hub. So they said that shovels are in the ground, um, in July of twenty-twenty-three for the Pioneer Camp. So that is not-
Pretty fast.
That's real fast, real fast, so. You know, and, and with any security of national defense like that, we don't get to have all the details yet, but we're just trying to do the best we can for everybody involved.
But if you do something wrong, then you'll get the details.
Oh, you know, right?
There you are.
Well, and with social media, we know that there's a lot more pressure to perform and, and show the world that the state of Nebraska and, and our local Panhandle can do a good job. So.
And when you talk about the details, are you, have they told you where those sites are supposed to be at?
The Housing Hub site? They have not, so because there's a choice on whether we can, whether they have it self-containing or whether they hook into utilities, um, we have not heard for sure yet. I think there's a, you know, while I can, it's only my speculation, but my speculation is they're waiting to see whether we're willing to invest in the infrastructure, not their infrastructure, right? But our, our sewer system, right, is sixty years old. So if you're going to flush three thousand more toilets, our sewer system needs to be upgraded, for example, right? And so I think they're, because they were going to give us the intent in January, and then it's been postponed to May. So they have to work with both the county commissioners and the city to determine that. And so we don't have that location yet. We know it has to be inside Kimball County. The commissioners have signed a, they took a vote and signed a letter that they have known- We know it has to be inside Kimball County. Uh, the commissioners have signed a, they took a vote and signed a letter that they have known, um, that they don't intend to allow it to be out in the county and that they support it being inside the city limits.
I see.
Um, is what the last, the commissioners voted on. So, we have some reason to believe that it'll be inside the city limits.
Sure. And the, that's the housing portion, that first phase, would you call it Pioneer?
The Pioneer Camp.
Would that also be within the city limits?
It would be at the, yep, it'll be at the location that they're building the Housing Hub. So, once we know that, we'll, I'm sure everybody will be in a hustle to get it all finished, so.
Very good. Anybody else have any questions?
What, what do you foresee as the, the long-term, um, availability of this, this, this type of funding that's, that's funding all these transit lines across the state?
Sure. They, they ask that question quite often. So, I can't speak on the Tri-City Roadrunner, but we've been funded since nineteen seventy-five, right? And the rules about how you get funded have changed, right? The requirements that you have to, all the hoops you have to jump through have changed over the years. Um, but the funding itself has not gone away, right? And if you, I don't know if you guys have taken the time, but even in the federal infrastructure bill, public transportation is listed by name as, um, them knowing that public transportation is part of your actual infrastructure. Um, and so, Corinne could probably speak better on the upper levels, but we don't see that funding going, if you think about it, rural funding, if they cut the rural funding, you're talking about transportation across the nation would come to a cease, and that would be a bad day for everyone, so.
Okay. Any, any other questions?
Yeah. So, if you had, if you had a bus here that would spend the night in our garage, so you could cut down on the deadhead, um, more than likely that you would have an employee on your payroll that lives here in our, do you have any employees currently that live in Scotts Bluff area?
So, I currently today do not have a Scotts Bluff employee, and you're right, in order for that to work well, right? The only reason we would park a vehicle here is if we had employees that actually lived here. That's the only way you save money for that. Um, we currently have Sydney, we currently have, uh, employees that live outside of Kimball for sure, and Sydney would be one of those examples. In Scotts Bluff, it's been just a little bit harder with the on-demand before these routes came about, because to be in Kimball at six forty-five in the middle of winter and have to go through Banner County is not as likely, unfortunately, just because of the weather. Um, but yes, in order to park a vehicle means that we would actually be paying your, one of your residents to work for us.
Okay. Interesting. I just learned more about, about that in the last ten minutes than I have for a long, a long time.
Well, if you had more, you know, I don't wanna take up too much of your time, but if you want more information, I've always got it.
So, my, my grandma's ninety-four years old, and she used to ride a bus from Indianola to Bartley. And this would be back in the, I don't know, twenties or thirties. And I was just astonished, and I just heard this den, this conversation at dinner a couple of months ago. I was astonished that back in the twenties or thirties, there was a bus route that would take people from Bartley to Indianola and back. And these were kids that would jump on, you know, at seven o'clock at night to go to a movie and, um, why, what, why did public transportation kinda dwindle if, if we had such a robust system back then?
Sure. You know, and I, I don't wanna speak out of turn. My, I'm just gonna give you my opinion. So, my opinion is, I do know that the funding used to come through, um, Department Health and Human Services, right? And so, it's, it was, there was some age-focused pieces to that. And the stigma still lasts today. It took us a long time, even from twenty seventeen to now, we're just now at a point where people don't see it as the old person's bus, right? I mean, really, um, people are afraid to, you know, I don't wanna be considered too, you know, old. Well, right now, we take from four to a hundred and four. I, I take kids, I take preschoolers across my county lines and across the state lines into Pine and to Potter. I have employees that ride, you know, now we have a robust, um, system, but I think there was definitely in some areas, not all areas, but in some areas, a stigma about, you know, elderly and that it was only for elderly people.
That's, it was called the Handy Bus.
It was called the Handy Bus, right?
That's, that's, that's what, where all of that started.
And, and now it's moved to public, actual public transportation, and I think sometimes that stigma just takes a while to, to kinda get over. And to be honest, the buses that we have coming look nothing like the buses that we use today with both us and, uh, Tri-City. We've gotten the very sleek, all-black, you know, they're not as fancy as they look, to be honest, but they look, you know, very modern so that we can attract the employees of, you know, and the different age groups that might have still had the stigma of the cutaway buses.
You mentioned Kevin Stocker. I didn't even know that the Denver, the Denver service was still available.
He hasn't. He actually closed down a couple of years ago.
That's what I thought.
During COVID. Yep, during COVID, he, they clo, it shut down. But before we started service, we wanted to be very careful to, you know, government is, never wants to take on something that a private um, business can do. And so, we called him out of courtesy to make sure that now that COVID's over and things are starting to get back to normal, was that something he was gonna take on? And we had a two-hour conversation. And he was, um, very clear that a private business cannot make money at doing transportation like that. That the reason we're successful is because we do have the fifty-three eleven grants.
Sure.
Pieces, so.
Which is the same boat we're in.
Yep, absolutely.
Absolutely. Any other questions of Christie, and then we'll move on to the Discuss and Consider action item? All right, I think you're still up.
I'm still up. I got a few more.
Mark, you had a question. I'm sorry. I mean, cut you off.
We had Panhandle bus routes in the seventies, back in the day, that were non-subsidized, I don't believe. They were a private bus. But I think the issue is that, again, transportation has become easier for every individual. More roads, more vehicles, more everything with transportation. The overall cost of transportation individually is cheaper. Um, but, um, the, the, uh, on-demand service, especially for these medical things, um, is one of the places that I see, um, the, the bus routes being extremely beneficial for families that need, um, three days a week dialysis, or my mom was on dialysis, so I know the needs of that. Fortunately for us, we were two miles away and able to do it ourselves. But, um, there were people that came fifty miles, a hundred miles, um, for dialysis, and that's a, a whole different deal.
That, and that's what, that's what the need that we're filling is, because we're covering all those rural areas that, you know, um, we understand that you guys, you know, in Scotts Bluff County, you have lots of residents in the county, that it already takes, uh, a number of resources just to get your people around town. Um, so there's, we're trying to fill that need out, you know, out, further out. I will tell you that while you might have heard our ads recently, since November one, when we started the airport service, we do not, we haven't ran ads from twenty seventeen to now, so all the growth was word of mouth. And it's amazing how I don't think people understand the need that's out there, because people did just ask their neighbor or their family member. And once there's something available for them to use, you know, we've grown by leaps and bounds. Like I said, you went seven thousand in twenty seventeen to almost thirty thousand, you know, this year is what we're looking at at the end of the fiscal year. And that's a huge growth.
Yeah. Kimball Hospital is growing. It's, it's getting bigger.
Brand new, yeah.
Exactly. So, the, the need to bring folks from Kimball up to here started, obviously, there, we have people from Scotts Bluff that go to Kimball to, to, you know, to, to see physicians.
There's a great relationship between the hospitals, and so, um, some of the physicians, I just had Ken Hunter in my office today. Um, and so, there's a great relationship between the two hospitals, and I know that, you know, Kimball does swing bed for Scotts Bluff. Um, with the new surgery center that they're gonna have in Kimball, I know that Scotts Bluff is overbooked with their surgery centers, so they're trying to partner on how all of those things work. So, we'll see a, a huge impact between Kimball and Scotts Bluff.
Yeah.
So, do you have an in-town route bus as well, or do you just go pick up wherever they call, or how do you run yours?
Yep. So, currently, it's on-demand. Um, we started with one bus, and we currently run three buses all day long in Kimball, Nebraska, in Little Tiny Kimball.
What do you mean by on-demand?
So, on-demand is door-to-door, where we just, they call, and we come pick them up at their door and.
But you don't run a route around in a circle?
We do not drive around in a circle, no. And even when we go to the checkpoint system, it's slightly different than the circle. We'll have times, for example, it might be every half hour at the hospital that we have to have a bus at the hospital every half hour
To pick up.
to pick up, but it won't be the same bus going round and round. It'll be whichever bus is available, and then we'll take them to their door.
Gotcha.
So, we're a little bit elderly. I mean, our community is a slightly, um, the median age is just a little higher, and so, I think keeping that door-to-door ability is important.
I agree.
Yeah, one side benefit to a robust transportation system like you have is, in the event of a natural disaster or emergency, you have buses and train drivers available, because transportation gets to be a real critical issue in some of these events. And if we have you guys to rely on, then that's an asset to our emergency manager and law enforcement, fire community, so.
And we have that on the list, so, yeah, absolutely. And vice versa. I wanna let, you know, we were very, very thankful. Um, we actually had a driver in Scotts Bluff that hit one of our vehicles right at, like, what, six o'clock? I mean, it was right at six o'clock, um, in the middle of, uh, Highway twenty-six, and right there at the stoplight, and, you know, we were able to call Kurt, and he was able to come pick up the wheelchair personnel and take them over to the mall just to keep them warm till we could send a, another wheelchair van up to take them home. Um, you know, so that partnership is, we're very, very thankful for them to partner with us.
Very good. Any other questions? Anybody? Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, to the Discuss and Consider authorizing a letter of support for the fifty-three eleven, fifty-three eleven F grant application for KCTS. And Kurt, are you speaking on this also with Christie?
I don't really have anything to add, other than the fact that we all need support from everybody, so.
You're, you're just on the list. That's the only reason I was calling on you.
I just, I think it's very beneficial to show we're partnering and we're working together. State of Nebraska, all of the trans agencies are working together in transit, quite honestly, blowing up in the state of Nebraska right now. I think there are a lot of good people, doing a lot of good things. And any way we can support Christie and obtaining her funds is one that will benefit us in the long run as well and our community, our residents. So, I would recommend that you support that.
Well, I think, you know, this, this board has, has set a, not a record, but at least made efforts to cooperate with surrounding counties as much as we can, uh, knowing that not one county can, can do it all. And, and if we can get help back and forth, that's, I think that's just so important, so very, very important. Do you have a, we have a copy of that letter?
Well, and I didn't wanna presume to speak for you guys, so there were a few options on the letter of support. Um, again, it's not my place to presume for the commissioners. So, one would just be a letter of support that says, yes, we, we support the KCTS's application. Um, one would be if you guys decided to, um, allow us to park, you know, at your facility, then we'd like that to be listed, just because we can show that as additional support.
Are you, are you talking about the current facility or the new facility?
The new facility. So, this is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five, um, grant application. So, we're, we're looking at the new facility, but if there's room, um, that you guys might consider allowing us to potentially park a vehicle there, um, you know, that would be something that we could add to the letter of support. But like I said, we didn't wanna presume, um, anything on, on you guys' behalf, so.
So, this, this is basically the, what we're going after?
Yep, there were some options of what you may or may not want to.
It, she sent this to me in Word document form, so you guys make your pick, and I can print it for you and get it on your letterhead if you so choose.
Yeah, we would need to, we would need to, just rather than give a blanket, okay, we need to see kind of what we're signing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I would say with the MOU or however you wanna word it, as far as parking in the facility, given the hours that those vehicles would be departing and returning, if it's a while before we get to the facility, we could probably accommodate that parking at our facility now, should she get to that point and find an employee here hopefully. They can just pull in there and park in the middle row, actually, and be out of the way before we start for the day.
Okay. So, our first item then is, is to decide which of these, and we have two of them, is that correct? We have one that's a memorandum of understanding, that's, that's for the parking.
That would be a sample of an MOU for the parking.
For, for the parking, and then this is the only one that we have as far as letters of support. Okay, gotcha. All right. I would entertain a motion for either approval or disapproval of a signature and letter supporting the grant fifty-three eleven, fifty-three eleven F.
Are we deciding on those six, or?
On these six items right here that were presented, unless somebody has a different idea.
It would be one of those six.
What's that?
I would, I would guess one of those six would be an example.
She's saying one of the six. We need to decide on one of the six, is what she's recommending.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Or two of the six, or I, I guess all six, but I, I just didn't wanna presume. I was giving options.
But it's our decision to.
Yes.
We should be making that decision now.
Yeah.
As part of this motion, I think.
Yes. Um, and I, and I misread it. I'm sorry. That's my, I apologize. First one's providing matching funds of five hundred dollars annually, provide a vehicle or park and ride spot through a lease option, providing an in-kind donation of five hundred for the use of parking, provided in-kind donation for, for five hundred for the use of parking space located at one, two, three, First Street. Provided in-kind service valued at five hundred dollars. And it says, explain the details, add to your website, place some support ads in the local newspaper, and have a donation event to raise money for riders in need.
We're just a letter of support that just says we support it. You could do none of those and just say, we just support Kimball having transportation. So, that's a generic form. We just wanted, we have all the options, and so, we, it's, it, so the in-kind donations are, if you allow us to park at your parking spot, that would be considered an in-kind donation. And you would have to put a, Kurt would actually have to put a value on that of whatever, if you feel like that parking spot was worth.
So, would that be similar to number three in that letter, or?
Yep.
We would, okay, so it'd be similar to, um, to number three and whatever number that Kurt would, instead of five hundred, it might be something different? And then at the proper address that we would want?
Yep.
But certainly, three, I, I don't think any of us have expressed any concern about sharing a parking spot with Kimball. And if that's true, we could at least agree to number three, I would think.
We don't have a building.
No, but they're saying that they may use it, a spot over here at this building.
Over existing, well, that's what I ask.
Or at least in a parking lot or whatever.
By the time they leave, they can just park right in the middle. They'd be gone before our routes start, and they'd get back afterward.
It doesn't cost us anything.
So, are, are you recommending number three, Kurt? Yeah, I, I'm, to be honest with you, as I said earlier, I'm not used to just signing something that I can't read to see what I'm gonna sign. I, I have, I have a little issue with that. I'm sorry. Okay, what I, what I would, what I would suggest is that we get, we get something, if, if we're leaning towards number three, get it in a resolution, something that we can all read with a signature line, and then we can do that. Yes, absolutely. I just don't feel comfortable just signing whatever, blank check kind of a thing.
I, I completely understand that. Same reason I didn't presume that you guys to, to fill it out and presume for you guys.
So, Kurt, if you could get that for us and, and.
Sure. And if, and if you have specific ideas, wherever, um, call me or email to me, and then I can, I can book it, Christie, to get it.
Okay. How soon do you need this, Christie?
Um, so, our hearing is gonna be scheduled for, um, April fourth, so we've got, we've got another meeting.
So, another meeting that we could do it. Okay. Let's have it for us for next meeting, get it on the agenda, and we'll, we'll either approve or disapprove it, I guess. Looks like we're gonna approve it. Okay. Christie, thank you, thank you very much. We appreciate. Okay. All right, next item then is to, uh, where are we at here? Discuss, consider any actions pursued developing MOU, and so, we'll do both of those at, at the next meeting then?
Perfect.
Is that all right with you?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, we won't take any action on that tonight?
All right.
All right, very good. And, uh.
That's it for me.
Yeah, you got, you've got one, you're not done yet. You're not done. Discuss and consider any action to pursue developing a regional MOU to assist in responding to emergency transportation needs.
So, this one is gonna take more than what we can do here tonight as well. I just wanted to make sure that I, we were authorized to work with your emergency management, um, staff, Kurt, our emergency management, because we fall under a different one, um, to come up with, uh, an MOU that works for not only natural disasters, but as I said. um, to come up with a, an MOU that works for not only natural disasters, but as I said, you know, if we were to have an accident or if they needed some assistance and what that might look like. We've seen other communities that really desperately needed that. And if you think about it, you might have, I, 'cause I was asked the same question. Well, you have plenty of staff, why do you need somebody else? Well, if it's a true natural disaster, my staff is gonna take care of their family, right? In the middle of that natural disaster, and I need other people from other communities that aren't affected to come assist us and vice versa.
I agree.
So, we would just like, uh, your blessing to work with them and your main emergency management.
And again, we don't have an MOU to, to actually approve.
No, I just wanted to make sure I had your.
Okay.
Not stepping on toes.
Would that have any sunset too, or does it just run continuously, or does it come to a point where we wanna review it?
I.
Or be able to make some changes? We leave it activated all the time, though it doesn't give us hardly anything to go in and change if we'd like to.
I would think that you would want to have a review, at least if nothing else, a review, that you review it every so many years and re. Mm-hmm.
You know, if you put that together.
Work with, we work with the different agencies and the different, uh, emergency managers in and Kimball's, uh, emergency manager. Probably need to have whether it's a Zoom meeting or we actually have a meeting all together and then obviously we have to make sure if you falls in, what we can legally do through the FTA and DOT.
Okay, so you'll have something for us for that next meeting also?
That one probably a little further.
Okay.
Yeah, that one's, I would guess that that might take, because of the emergency management piece, it might take a little while. We just, like I said.
Do you have emergency management staff or people?
We, we use emergency man, the Region Twenty-One, so for emergency management.
I think in, in concept, I think we agree with it.
Yes, I think so.
And that you should pursue putting together a MOU.
Perfect. I just know with my commissioner, same thing, I don't wanna step on your guys' toes and assume that that was okay.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Okay, sounds great, appreciate it.
Perfect, thank you.
Christie, thank you, nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for all the information.
Absolutely.
Very informative. Okay, moving on, Kurt, discuss, consider approval of the resolution to apply for funding through section fifty-three eleven of the Federal Transit Act and the Nebraska Public Transportation Act funds for the operation of the Tri-City Roadrunner to provide public transportation within Scottsburg County for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, and twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, so, I gave you a packet and all the stuff that I worked through. Again, I have to, this agreement aligns with the state's biennial budget. So, I have to do this for two years and pull out my crystal ball and figure out how much fuel's gonna cost in two years and all that. And then build in for potential growth, build in for wage increases, you have to build in for inflation to the best, to the best of our ability. And so I, um, basically gave you all the worksheets, all the things I plugged numbers in everywhere I could, looked at potential, our, our wage increases that, two, we know are gonna happen, plus if there happens to be a cost of living and then insurance is gonna go up and fuel costs, all that. So, that's all the documents you have to kind of support that. All gets plugged into the state's portal and that's where that summary page comes from. Breaks it down, all those costs into operating and non-operating. Uh, and one thing to clarify, this does not include vehicles. This is just operating and non-operating, cost of vehicles are separate. Those numbers I include in my county budget each year, but they're not included in this.
Were you included in the bid that we got from the, from the Roads Department on fuel? Or were you out of that one?
I, I would, the issue we have on that is the need for receipts. And that's why when, as we talked about the facility, we started talking about potentially putting a, a fueling station there where we can buy in bulk. If we put that in and we get approved for it, eighty percent of that facility is paid for.
So, right now, you're just paying pump prices, basically?
We get three per, we get however federal taxes back and three percent discount per gallon through the law. A three cent gallon, which was about what that other fuel card we looked at was about the same, so it really, for us, there was no real gain.
I'd like to see everybody on that fuel bid.
And, and that would be great, I have, we would have to upgrade the technology out there.
Yeah.
My business with Steve a little bit, I, we actually, I actually have to have a printed pump receipt for every fuel, every time they fuel. We could put the receipt printer in our office, honestly, if nobody else needs it, we can just print to my dispatcher. But, um, if it doesn't include upgrading that equipment, I can't deal with it really. I have to have that documentation for the state, so.
Where does Kimball, how do they handle fuel?
For fuel?
Fuel and documentation, do you have to do the same thing or go through a outside agency?
Absolutely, um, we are required to have documentation of our fuel. Um, so we do it slightly differently. We want to support local as much as possible since we're such a small community. So, we have a Voyager fleet card, um, and we buy fuel locally at our local, um, gas stations. And then, um, we get re, that reimbursed, but we do have to have every, and it's quite the process, um, for that. But for us, we try to support local.
But, but you're not, you're not bidding on fuel, you're buying, paying whatever pump prices are?
We're paying whatever the pump prices are to make sure that our federal dollars are coming back to our hometown.
Okay.
So, then also with this and visiting with, uh, Korean with the mobility management team, we talked about the facility, we're, we're starting to get that process going, so I bid, I add in some funding in here to help cover those initial upfront costs, should we need to do some, any architectural engineering, uh, stuff. There's a, a NEPA study that needs to be done, which is environmental study on if we decide on a site. That has to be done before we even purchase the property. Uh, it's, it's a very detailed process that she knows way more about than I know. So, basically what I'm asking, this is, this is the figures I came up with for two years. And I did try to build it extra, uh, this isn't, this is just so the state basically is gonna allocate this much money out of the money that they get from the feds, and allocate this much money for us. Then my annual budget I bring to you, I tweak as we go. I, if you look in here, I actually have a proposed budget for the next two years, but those are numbers based on where I think it could be, and then as we get closer to budget time, I adjust those numbers based on what our actual salary and wage increases are, what fuels we're currently selling for. Get it more, more accurate based on current time versus two years out. So, um, again, it's a very large number, uh, significantly higher than the last two-year operating agreement, but this will allow us to hopefully cover all of our expenses, get that reimbursement, and not have to go back into a supplemental agreement one I did because I didn't ask for enough. So, it's between the state and the federal, part, we're looking at just under two point five million for the next two years. And that's not what the county has to pay, that, and it's plugged into that formula. We get, uh, ninety percent of our non-operating costs back and seventy-five percent of our operating costs reimbursed back.
Okay.
And then all of my other local match money we get from our Medicaid trips, all that, comes off of what the county's portion is before we actually have to ask for tax money from the county. So, uh, two point, uh, two, two million four hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars for the next two years.
Where do you have it on your sheet, Kurt?
Uh, it's on the resolution, this sheet doesn't actually add it up, but what it is, is the federal plus the state at the bottom of it from summary page.
Okay, okay, okay. The local match, is that where our local match is gonna be?
Funds by source, um, the state and the local match and state is always the same and that, that local match is, once all these numbers come out, yeah, five thirty-nine, two twenty-four.
That's for two.
Two years, and that doesn't include all, I ha, this does, this has project, this has projected local match in it.
But it doesn't, it doesn't include the income, basically, or you do have some.
Revenue comes right off the top, so our passenger fares comes right off the top.
So, that comes, okay.
And then I put in this, in this, uh, portal, you put in what you estimate your local match to be. So, that includes the funds we get from, from the college, from the hospital, from our Medicaid trips, HHS, when we do those trips, we take all that money off and then that's.
I called, called you earlier last year, yeah, I believe it was last year and I got some, um, numbers from you. You remember what that, what our local match was at that point?
Four hundred, two hundred thousand for the last fiscal year.
Okay.
You talked about.
So, you're just a tad higher than that now.
Tad higher in that, you know, building for growth and then of course, you know, with our wage study. Uh, I, I, there's gonna be some increases in wages there and again, we get, uh, drivers, dispatchers, we get seventy-five percent of that back. Uh, I'm also looking at adding some staff here because of all these regulations, there's a lot going forward. Having more of an accounting person on staff to make sure my numbers are square, especially with all the things that went on in the report and all that.
My real question is, by putting that all together like you did, is there a chance I could borrow that crystal ball you used?
I dropped it.
We'll see how it's possible.
So, um, that's, basically, this, this goes, if, if you don't approve this, then I have to, uh, publish it in the paper, ten-day comment period. I'm waiting on a few documents that I need to have and then it gets uploaded and submitted to state for approval.
I had a question for you, um, local match source. You really don't anticipate ALLETE will give more than a thousand dollars?
They're, right now, they're doing five hundred, uh.
For as many trips as you make out there.
But that's DeVita.
That's DeVita, which is part of them.
And that's separate, that's completely separate. We, we've approached that and I, I talked to, um, some folks at DeVita. Still working on it, but I haven't gotten them, them for any type of local map with the number of trips we do there. I think part of the problem is, is most of their clients are Medicare, Medicaid, so they don't actually have a real high profit margin on those. And so then between their facility costs and all that, I, that was their, that was their argument to me.
For DeVita, but I would think ALLETE would be more receptive, maybe?
I have, I've had discussions with them and I, I have other entities I would, I'm approaching. Uh, it's an ongoing process, I've managed some managerial changes. The hospital, I would like to be able to get more out of there as well. But with everything going on right there, it's probably not a good time to approach them. But I am looking, because of the number of trips we do there, for additional. And we are also working with the mobility management team on an RFP, just advertising on the buses. We work, basically government, it takes a while to get all that.
We, we've actually talked about that for a couple of years, getting that out there.
An idea I'm, I'm working on is actually on the route buses, rather than paying for a data plan for the tablets, is using that money to put Wi-Fi, put Wi-Fi on the buses that run the tablets and then we can additionally put the screens with the rolling advertisements on instead of having to put decals and advertising on the buses, it would just be on the screen, especially in the small, the buses that run the route. Quick and easy change and probably very cost-effective minus the hardware upfront to do that. So, working with them on all this, um, that, that, they're the folks who helps with all these projects. They're kind of our project management team, basically.
Okay.
I wanna be sure, um, so we had, this is the one where we had a resolution in our packet, then we got an updated one? I'm assuming it's the one with the higher price?
Yes.
The one for two, two point four seven seven?
That was after visiting with Korean as we go forward with this, looking for a facility, there's, we kind of predicted there's gonna be some costs that come with going, go through those preliminary steps that I built in for the next two years.
So, we should, this one for two point four three one, we should throw it away?
That is what I did.
Okay. Moving forward, uh, I would entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove the resolution presented to us by Mr. Richter.
My move that we approved a resolution, uh, presented by, uh, Mr. Richter.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other questions or comments, please? If not, record your vote. Result of the voting?
Oh, yes.
Motion is passed. Okay, thank you.
Do you have a copy of that just?
Well, we, I think we each have one, I, do you, do you have an official one that you want, then?
Thank you, Kurt.
Okay, next item is receive update regarding the CDBG CB grant award for United Way, Amy Sapp. Maybe if you'll just give us your name and.
Amy Sapp, who's trying to handle area development districts.
Awesome, thank you, Amy.
And I came to bring bad news.
Really? Well, then you can just sit down then.
We don't wanna hear it.
Yeah.
Well, at your last meeting, we have the MOU here that I think you guys have some questions on. Um, but I'll, I'll go back. The CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus, um, was opened in October and it was invitation-only, as you guys are aware. And so Pad was not aware of that grant. It was, um, opened to Karen with United Way. And so we found out about it in December, which is when we came to you guys to start working on all the legal documents. Um, and so the pre-application was submitted by United Way and it was a one-page pre-application, very basic. It was for two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. They, the state came back, took a few things off of it and I think the second time around, it was two thirty-one is what we went for. Um, and so we got down to the nitty-gritty and we started working on the application. Pad did, since we're certified, um, administrators for CDBG funds. And the last status of the application is budget and that's when we do the MOU. And we realized that a lot of the budgetary items were not just for United Way, it was for other nonprofits. And so there was a miscommunication in the pre-app phase between Karen and the state. And so she was being, United Way was, was a pass-through. And so the state didn't know that because based off Karen's pre-application, they thought that the money was all going to United Way. And so if you looked on the MOU, it was like eighty-eight thousand going to eleven thirteen ministries. The state didn't know any of that. And so as soon as they found that out, when I submitted the final application, they put a mix on the application. So, we did not get the funds.
Okay.
Um, Karen and I had a, a conversation with them. They said that we could try to go back for, there was about forty to fifty that would've gone to United Way with the administrative funds for Pad to handle that for three years. Um, we, Pad would've lost money, so the call was up to Pad and the state and we both kind of decided it wasn't, it wasn't worth it, so.
Are you working with Christie on it?
Christie.
Yeah, Christie McCloud, yeah.
No, Laura Hart is the, um, what, the DED representative for this grant, Christie McCloud's housing.
Yeah, okay.
So, unfortunately, we'll look for other opportunities though.
All right, very good.
Sorry, I wanted you guys to be aware of that.
So, we will, we will, uh, we'll just move on to the next item. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Uh, next item, received presentation regarding preventive care platform, Will Arthur. Good evening, sir. You'll just state your name for the record and then we'll move on. If anybody wants a cookie, they're sure welcome to come up here and have one. I, I, you know, I figured, I figured they were gonna go to that end. I've had to cut way back. Okay.
Yeah, my name is Will Arthur.
Okay, and you, and just who you're representing, Will?
I'm a, I'm a lowly insurance broker, um, for about seventeen years. And I'm here to present, it's a two-part benefit package for the employees through Attentive, which you guys probably are not familiar with, it's a little bit new. And then, um, through Cigna, which I don't know if you guys are familiar with Cigna. It's a large health insurance organization.
If you don't, just watch TV, 'cause you'll see it about six times at night, yeah, yeah.
I think I write them a check every week.
Mark's very, Mark's very close with you guys, yeah.
They kinda work with our health benefit plan here at the county, Cigna.
Sure, so I, I work with their supplemental division, which they just got started about five, six years ago to compete with the Aflac Duck, if you're familiar with, um, our, well, biggest competitor. Cigna's two hundred times bigger than Aflac, but, so, they put together, uh, the, the packages are, um, more coverage for less money, I guess is the, the best way, so that's why we partnered with Cigna. But then we discovered, they had this partner with, partnership with Attentive. And so there's two things I wanted to make sure that I throw out upfront that we're not gonna talk about today. So, number one is, we're not gonna ask the county for any money and we're not gonna ask the employees for any money. So, everything that's funded is because of the partnership with Attentive. When a, an employer puts Attentive in, in place for their employees, it creates tax savings through the FICA and I, I'm gonna, I've got a PowerPoint, so we'll get to a payroll example and show you exactly how that works. But everything is funded by the tax savings. So, uh, what we discovered from talking to HR directors all over the United States is that employees love benefits, they just don't like paying for them. And so if we can find a way to get them some benefits that they're not paying for, that, they get real excited about that. And so if we can find a way to get them some benefits that they're not paying for, that they get real excited about that generally, so. Um, so let me go ahead and, uh, jump into the PowerPoint. So, the idea behind Attentive is it's a healthcare cost management platform. It's an online portal. An employee enrolls in it, they get an email that says, come set up the username and password, then they get access to a whole, like, seven different, um, benefits that are all preventative. What people have done in the past to try to deal with the ever-rising cost of healthcare is, uh, plan manipulation. Where you change your carrier, you change your network, you change the deductibles, but that, seems, seems like every single year the prices just keep going up anyway. And so what Attentive did was they put together your three sixty approach, um, adheres to the physician's care plan, proof lifestyle choices, and try and create a healthier insured population. Another big thing that they focus on is, um, dealing with, uh, the employees that have some kind of a chronic, uh, condition. We've discovered that typically somewhere between five to ten, ten percent of any employee group are the ones that go to the doctor the most because they have some kind of chronic issue. So we're trying to, uh, help those people as much as possible through the use of AI engagement, which that sounds really technological, but it's just notifications. If you guys have ever gotten notifications on your phone from something that's advertising to you. What we do is, once that employee logs on for the first time, they, we ask them to do a, a little health survey of them and their family and then they send notifications to them based on their personal situation, because everybody's situation with health is different. So, these are the ten specific, uh, chronic issues that they are trying, trying to help, um, deal with and help, uh, help people be more healthy. So, Attentive, um, there are three documents that we have to put in place to get, um, started with Attentive. The first one is, uh, your cafeteria plan document, which most everybody already has one of those, so what we would do is just do an addendum to that. And what a cafeteria plan document, for those of you who may not know, it allows you pre-tax premiums, um, health, health insurance premiums or retirement pre-tax. So we, um, pre-tax the Attentive premium, which is eight hundred dollars for an individual or eleven twenty-five for a family per month. And that creates the tax savings. And then through what's called a SIMR document or a self-insured medical reimbursement program document, we're actually allowed, because it checks all the boxes, we're allowed to reimburse that, uh, premium back to them on the same paycheck post-tax. And I'll, once again, I'll show you a little bit of how that works. And then the last document that we put in place is called a preventative care management plan document. Basically what that does is it validates that all the benefits on this portal are what they call two thirteen D compliant, which basically allows us to do the reimbursement. Does that make sense?
Of course.
So, this is a preventative care management program. It's a participatory model and it is found on page thirty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-one of the Affordable Care Act. So if you guys are having a hard time sleeping some night, you want to look that up, it is on page thirty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-one. For sure. Now, what most people hated, quote unquote, about the ACA was the fact that there was a man, mandate involved. This does not have a mandate involved. So, when we present this to employees, they can opt-in or opt-out, it's up to them as to whether they want to get involved or not. Um, the second thing is this, uh, model is an integrated one oh five plan. So what that requires is in order for the employees to remain compliant, quote unquote, they have to log on and do one activity over the course of the year on the portal.
What do you mean by an activity?
So, um, I'm going to show you the actual benefits, but, um, one of, there's a, they can read a, read a blog, watch a video.
Usually health-related blog, video.
It's, it's all designed to help create a health workforce. Or if they just do that little health survey, the first word that counts as an activity.
Okay, so if they don't do that, or don't report it or record it, they drop off?
No, what we do is we get, uh, reports of, of how many people have actually done it and so we come out, back out, they signed up, yell at them.
Get it done.
We come out and bring food, lock people on. So we've never had anybody in six, seven years that wasn't compliant on this part, because we give reports on that. But that's not for you guys to take care of, it's for us to make sure we keep an eye on that. Okay, so program eligibility for the employees, they may, they have to have major medical in place. That could be through the county, it can be through their spouse, or if they're young enough, it could be through their parents. They have to be W two, so we can run this through payroll. And then they have to be full-time. I guess another way of full, saying full-time is they have to make a minimum of about seventeen thousand dollars a year, because we can't pre-tax more than they make, if that makes sense. So, they have to, basically, they have to make more than seventeen thousand dollars a year to be eligible. Along with having the major medical and the, uh, and be W two. So, you would see an immediate impact on the very first payroll as far as the tax savings goes. Um, we do have a high opt-in. Out of the last four employers that I've worked with, I think I had three people that didn't enroll out of about a hundred. The employees love this because it doesn't affect their take-home pay. So, they're getting extra benefits, doesn't, you know, cost them anything. My, my past experience when I was competing with the Aflac Duck is if I got twenty or thirty percent, um, participation in what I was doing, when I was selling benefits to employees. Twenty or thirty percent was great, you know, this is a whole nother ballgame. Now we're getting eighty to ninety percent of the employees getting covered with the Cigna plans. And the Cigna plans, just so you kind of know, are cancer coverage, accident coverage, heart attack stroke coverage, um, and hospital coverage. So, they're going to have all of those kind of plans and everything that's on, on the preventative care portal and their paycheck is going to be the same. Um, it is all, uh, done online with the preventative care and we do get forty percent of the people because of the, uh, the notifications that will come back more than one time over the course of the year and, um, do more than one activity. And then there are, um, so these are average numbers and we'll get into some details on the specifics, but, so, on average, the average employee, because everybody, it's all based on their tax situation, they get an average of eighteen hundred dollars a year that they're allowed to utilize to, to pay for the additional Cigna. And then on average, the employee, the employer, so the county would aver- average about five hundred dollars per year in tax savings that would actually go back to the bottom line of the county. So let me repeat that part because that's not going to.
Weird.
So.
Five hundred per?
Per year, per employee that enrolled.
Per employee.
Yep. So if you had, uh, two hundred enroll, about a hundred grand, that would go back to the bottom line of the county. Okay, so let's go ahead and get into, this is a paycheck example so that you guys can see the mechanics of how this works. So, on the left side, this is the monthly paycheck and, um, this is without Attentive. And then on the right side, we put Attentive in so you can see how that works. So, this is a monthly gross pay of thirty-two eighty-eight and then we take out whatever is pre-taxed, in this case, just a major medical, giving you a taxable income of twenty-seven eighty-eight forty-six. At that point, you take out your deductions for federal, social security, Medicare and state and then you have on the bottom a net pay, in this case, twenty-two thirty-seven. So that's a typical paycheck. Probably you guys have seen these kind of paychecks your whole life. Pretty simple. So now we're going to go ahead and add the Attentive in and the mechanics are pretty similar, we're just also going to throw in a few things, how Attentive makes money and how the, the extra pre-tax works. So, same, uh, gross salary and then you've got your pre-tax deductions, but now we're adding the Attentive into it. So, total pre-tax in this case goes down from twenty-seven eighty-eight down to sixteen sixty-three for your total taxable monthly income in this particular example. And then because your taxable monthly income is less, you have tax savings. In this case, a difference gross tax savings of two hundred and seventy-four dollars. Am I going too fast? Everybody with me? Okay. At that point, then, the first thing we do is we take out a fee that is transferred to the employee of eighty dollars per month that goes to Attentive to keep the platform going. And that leaves, in this case, a hundred and ninety-four dollars of an after-tax allotment that they can, the employee can use to purchase their additional supplemental. And so we, we, uh, put that in down here. And then the SIMR, Self-Inured Medical Reimbursement Program, uh, allows us to reimburse that eleven twenty-five back to them post-tax so that their check, in this case, it went up by four bucks because we didn't use the entire hundred and ninety-four, we used a hundred and ninety of it approximately. So, virtually no change in your net pay, uh, but now you've got a whole bunch of additional benefits.
You had, back that up again, please.
Oh, sorry.
Your net pay was twenty, what, twenty-two thirty-seven?
Right.
And twenty-two forty-three?
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Twenty, I think I might.
And that's, and that's with the insurance policy.
So your hundred, a hundred dollars held up?
No, it, the check, the, the net pay went up by four dollars.
Right.
Okay.
And I've got examples, I can get you guys copies of all this stuff that you guys will get. Questions? So the next part of this pro- presentation is, uh, just a, just a real quick run-through of what the Attentive online portal benefits look like, what they actually are. So, on the left side there is what it, what the portal looks like from a, on a phone. Um, each participant has a, a personal portal with HIPAA, high-tech certified facial recognition, password protected. They do have the AI with the notifications once they've taken the health, health screening for them and their family. And then there is a virtual assistant. You see the little picture on the phone there? That's the, uh, virtual assistant for their, for those that are technologically challenged like, like me, actually. So, if I screw up my computer here, I'm a little technologically challenged myself. Okay, so, um, the first benefit on the portal is called Dial-Care. And so this includes a telehealth solution. I don't know if any of you guys have ever used telehealth. So it's, uh, people use it typically for sore throats and rashes and stuff you don't want to actually go to the doctor for. But you have access twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week to a board-certified physician that can prescribe meds from across the country to your local pharmacy. And if you can get the employees to use the Attentive version of this, there's no copays, no deductibles and no claims on your health insurance on a group plan. It also includes, um, a bunch of, I call it coaching, so health coaching. So, they want to get on here, they got prescription questions, um, they have diagnosis questions, um, education, they got the telehealth, they can help locate any network providers and explain that the coverage is on your group plan. And the next piece is, it actually has tele-dentistry. Now, don't laugh too hard, nobody's getting a filling done on Zoom. But, um, what it is good for is a couple of things. One is to avoid unnecessary trips to the ER. So you have, an example would be a Sunday night, somebody's chomping on their salad, they bust their tooth, but the dentist's not open on a Sunday night. So they can get on here to see if they really need to go see somebody, but if they do, they're going to the ER, they're not going to the dentist if it, if it's after hours. So this is the kind of thing they can have a place to go and figure out if they need to go to the ER or not. We're trying, once again, we're trying to lower the number of claims, because we know the number of claims on your group plan, the number of claims leads to your rate increases every year. Um, another thing that's real good for is, uh, second opinions. So, your dentist here tells you you need a root now, you can get a second opinion on here and it doesn't cost you anything. Uh, the next piece is called, uh, Corp Care. It's an EAP program, so this is mental health. So they get up to six sessions of additional mental health. I believe you guys have one of those?
We have something, but it's employee only and this included family, did it not?
Yes.
Yes.
Plus it also, it's, they're limited by the number of sessions, so it gives them six more sessions as well. Yeah. Um, but it's for, sorry.
Is it, this is all Dial-Care? This is all dial-in on everything you got?
Yeah, it's all, all on, on the portal.
Virtual.
Online, virtual, yeah. So everything from depression, anxiety, grief, stress, legal concerns, financial concerns, help out with all those things. Um, the next piece is called the Our Relationship. This is a couples counseling first step program. So it's, um, designed to help people that are maybe a little reticent to go to actual couples therapy, help them figure out if they actually need it. And they can do it on here for virtual visits, help with stress. If they really need to go see the therapist, then, then they can go do that afterward. Uh, the next is Virtual Recovery. So this is Freedom Three Sixty-Five, it's, uh, oops. So this is Addiction Recovery, online coaching, um, for any kind of addiction. Big thing we're trying to do is get people to quit smoking and chewing, but, um, any kind of addiction, alcohol, drugs, opioids, anything. Um, and then Hope Eighty Twenty is a CDC granted AMA-approved diabetes and weight loss program. Uh, we got, they get a personal health coach. We're trying to help people not become diabetic and we're trying to help coach up people that are diabetic, um, lose some weight, change their diet, um, exercise a little bit more, those kind of things. And then our flagship partner is Mayo Clinic, everybody's familiar with the Mayo Clinic. So there's two libraries. When you're asking about, uh, what an activity would be, they can get on here and just read a, read a blog post. They get a personal wellbeing assistant with this. It's Dr. Kari Olson's Four Pillars of a Healthy Lifestyle, a big library of how to live more healthy.
Is that monthly? So they got to read a blog if you want to?
Uh, once, he, once, once over the course of the year.
Oh, really? Okay.
So, they don't have to do a ton.
If they want to, they can get on all they want then as well.
Correct.
Exactly. And we're hoping we do that, but, you know, that depends on the person, obviously. Um, the last, uh, library, this is another library of how to live more healthy, but it's specifically focused on, um, how to deal with stress more effectively. You know, the forty percent of job turnover is due to stress. So you got videos, lectures, tips, tricks, blog posts, all kinds of things. And everything that I've just shown you is, um, no copays, no deductibles, twenty-four seven access for the, for them and their family.
No cost to them, no cost to us.
It's all funded by tax savings.
And we get five hundred per employee per year.
On average. I've actually got the specific numbers because we actually went through and got that done.
On ours.
But, but they can't change, if you get somebody that doesn't do their stuff, don't call in or don't, don't read the blogs and don't do the stuff, now do they start costing the county as well then?
Well, then, we're probably dropping them off the program so it doesn't cost the county anything. But we're, if they enrolled, we're going to come out and ask them to log on at least once.
I mean, is there any chance of any cost for the county through this?
Not that I know of.
It is thirty dollars per participant, but the idea is that you have a savings with the tax savings. Just making that crystal clear on that one example.
So there is, it, you, we still have to pay thirty dollars per person?
I believe it's thirty.
It's eighty from the employee and thirty-five from the employer, that it comes out of your tax savings.
So how does, how does the employer get theirs back?
By paying less in FICA and less in federal income tax. Because we've done enough pre-tax programs to reduce their wages to a net wage that we pay off rather than the higher, yeah, bring back your example.
Yeah.
I got, you're actually drawing more of this one.
Just, just, well, I got this thought. We could make this program mandatory. And say, if you don't participate in this program, we're going to raise your premiums.
I can't speak to that.
Mm, for your health plan, oh, you mean?
Remember when Regional West did that to us?
They did, didn't they?
They, they, they did.
I think I was, like, leaving right about that. Sorry, Charlie, but I'm.
Yeah, so it's, it's, there's a way to encourage participation.
For like smoking cessation.
Yeah.
And for those who are on your health plan.
Yes.
Right?
Yep, yep.
And they have to have a health plan in order to do this.
Right.
Oh.
So, going back to fees and whatnot, so, everything is funded out of this two seventy-four, that gross tax savings. So, eighty comes out, that's out of the employee's tax savings and the rest of their tax savings goes, this is employee, employee.
You, I'm look, what I'm looking at, I'm looking at something that reminds me a lot about the government. You got a hundred and seventy-two eighty-eight, supposed to be paid to social security and you're only paying one oh eight fourteen, I think I see. So you're taking sixty, what, sixty-six dollars out of their social security that's not being applied to their account?
This is true.
That's, uh, not where I'd want to take it from.
That's kind of how it works.
I don't take that, uh, from a.
But if you make them a healthier person when they go on social, on social security, then maybe they'd be paying less out of their Medicare line for the government.
That's, that's, you're talking about, that's one paycheck a month or is that every two weeks you basically?
That's for the month.
So if sixty dollars shorts or over seven hundred dollars are going to be pulled out of their social security fund?
Oh, and that, it's not going to.
Have you ever seen how, how it's calculated, social security?
Pardon me?
Have you ever seen how social security's calculated?
Well, I know you got to put money in to get it back out.
Thirty-five months or something like that.
It's, it's an, it's what they call it, it's an indexed average of your top thirty-five years. So, even when it looks like that's a sixty-six dollars or whatnot, and I've got some documentation, I can get you to read on it if you want to. They're going to have to have, have this for at least ten years before it's going to make a real big dent in your social, in how much, because you got to remember the max you can get is three thousand a month. And that's if you made a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars a year for each of the last thirty-five years. So the impact of it, it's all math, which is way more complicated than anything I'm showing you is how our social security is, uh, is calculated. But, we can get into the details if you want to look at that. So, yes.
It's up to the people.
Yeah, and that's the other thing.
Whoever they might definitely look at.
It's really about their social security.
Right.
And what they might get later.
You bring up a valid point.
And I think just that at the very least, they should be aware of that in their decision process.
It'd be, it would be their choice.
It'd be, it would be their choice.
Right.
Actually, I probably speak speaker, mandating it, have it there. So, sure.
We've, we've had Will to the county two, at least two, three times to do presentations and we also saw another program brought to the insurance committee. And we've been working with Kelly's group to try to see how we can apply this through the, through our payroll system. And we wanted you to see this as a possible next step in implementing, I think most, most people, most of us who have seen it are in favor of why not try? And see if employees are receptive and if this is something that would work to add on a benefit for our employees.
So this has gone through the insurance committee?
We have looked at it, insurance committee, yes.
And they're in favor of?
Yeah, yes.
The, while certainly, I guess I'm not seeing any significant negative effect to the county. And it looks like that we could ultimately end up with five hundred dollars per employee per year. That's what you're telling me. And that's, again, through the savings of less FICA, less match and social security.
Yes.
Right.
So because, I've met with all of these folks.
Is that what it was? Yeah, you went ahead and.
We did get all the exact numbers.
Yeah.
Missing like maybe four or five employees. But this actually will show you, if you look on here. This is a preliminary proposal that if you look, in the middle of the top, there's a total tax savings, a hundred and thirty thousand four oh one. That's if every single employee signed up for this net. This is after you paid good. And then the total post-tax lapping number on the, top of the left side, that's thirty-six thousand dollars per, per the Cigna benefits. How much they've got kind of available to all of these different people. If you go through and you look here, look at the very top employee, you've got a two oh five oh seven, that's your monthly gross tax savings. That's the two seventy-four number off that example. You've got the eighty dollar fee, you've got their after-tax lapping, in this case, the top one, it's one twenty-five oh seven. And then you've got the employer totals. So you've got gross tax savings, annual, and then the monthly fee. So there's a fee that comes out of the employer's tax savings. And then if you look at the totals, so you've got annual net FICA tax savings for the employer. And then that's this column. And that's where you would, you add up all those and that annual net FICA tax savings. That's where you get that hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
And that thirty-five dollar fee's already out of there.
Yeah.
So we're not, the employee's not paying more, the county's not paying more, and we're going to benefit.
You're not gonna write us a check, but we're gonna realize those savings on a monthly basis when we write payroll checks.
Plus, plus they're receiving more benefits.
Yes.
That thirty-five dollar fee is monthly.
Monthly, yes, per employee.
I've seen it, I just wasn't looking at what it made sense to me.
You've got your annual gross tax savings, that's coming out of that number.
I would do it, I would do it if I had the opportunity.
So the, Attentive or whoever is getting the hundred and fifteen per month.
Yes, that goes to Attentive to keep the program. Now, this, this slide right here is compliance. So some people want to know where in the tax goes and all that kind of thing, it's this all put together. So this is an article written, it's called the CPA Journal. Apparently Dr. Free Day MA Journal, CPAs read what's called the CPA Journal. So this gentleman who wrote this was on their editorial board and we've got cop, copies of this. That you can read. It's written in regular English, I'm just a dumb sales guy and I understood this article. But it's twenty questions of putting together health wellness program for, for the workplace opportunities and tax costs savings. Some people want to know all the details, where the tax goes, all of this, it comes from. And then next piece we have, what's called a white paper. So this is written legally by a tax attorney and about nine pages of, I call it the roadmap through the tax code. Of how all this stuff puts together to check all the boxes to be compliant to do this. This particular person who wrote this, she's a former IRS agent. That's tested five in front of Congress on tax issues and she's a tax attorney out of the Washington DC area.
Okay.
So we've got a legal, legal background on the tax code. So this is tax savings, additional benefits. Saving you money and putting up preventative care lapels placed to create a healthier workforce and try to create, save money on healthcare in general. This is a process flow, kind of summary of what I showed you.
Ours, ours costs a lot more to do this online.
On the payroll is healthcare. So employer establishes chart at the top right, the preventative care program in the simmer, the employee elects to participate in the program, elects the pre-tax premium. Self-insured medical reimbursement, the program reimburses the full premium to the net pay. You have gross tax savings to the employee, the employee pays the administration fee to Attentive. Employee rolls in the ancillary benefits, remaining tax savings, no reduction in their take home pay, employer saves on average five hundred dollars. So this last slide is an implementation sequence, so we're actually kind of through some of it. The first thing is collecting census data, which we collect with Kynan and Kelly. To get that proposal that you guys were gonna have. Then if you guys vote to let's do this, then we put some documents in Lisa's hands, have some people, whoever needs to sign it, master service agreement, through section one twenty-five of the DED. Then we get more with MIPS because I did get to talk to Nick Smith, I guess is the gentleman with your payroll, payroll software. He did say that he would help with uploading the, the people that decided they wanted to enroll in the program, put that in the payroll. So trying to make it easier on Kelly's office as much as possible. That we would come out, I'd bring a couple of my colleagues to do the enrollment. There are also, yeah, there's three items to add to your payroll software.
Do you, do you require any minimum sign up for it?
Five.
Really? That's all?
That's pretty cool.
Well, there's, there's a lot of this, they say you have to have fifty-one percent or something, you know, signing up for stuff.
No, there's actually, Attentive doesn't have a minimum, it's, we get a group rate from Cigna.
Is there a sign up period? So if somebody decides maybe after you're here that they want to do it, they still have that availability?
Yeah, so we do an open enrollment for Attentive. And then we can come back every six months, every three months, however often to enroll new employees.
Normally what you see when you're adding something new, not everybody understands it. So if you don't understand it, we're not gonna do it. One of those kind of things. And then the word of mouth gets out, hey, this is, this isn't bad. And then they still have that opportunity to come back and do it.
Yeah, and we would definitely come back.
Yeah.
But we do everything we can to work with these two, do everything we can to make this available to as many people as possible.
Okay.
So I think I'm understanding this sheet pretty well until I get over here to the, the annual net FICA tax savings, I understand that. And then the next one, annual payroll reduction. What's that column? That's how much? Lessened payroll.
Yeah, that's how much lessened payroll. I guess that's, that's a, uh, uh, the number. Yeah, I'm trying to remember how that's what it says.
But I'm just seeing that most of them are one number and then some are another number.
So those are gonna be based on the nine thousand six hundred, that's gonna be an individual that's a single person that haven't dependents. And that thirteen thousand five hundred number is gonna be a.
A family?
Family or a couple.
Yeah. Okay.
So I know, I know that's the difference. And then that three fourteen versus six twelve, that's the same thing. On, under their net FICA.
Fam, family versus single. Okay.
You gonna say something to me?
And that's how they file, because we get on the W four information, how they, how they file based on their W four.
Okay. All right, so we don't, we're just, we're just receiving a presentation, there's no action needs to be taken or anything tonight.
What I was gonna say is I can go ahead and get you as much information, size information, she's got a whole file of information for you guys.
Okay. I would, I would, I would suggest that if we have questions, to get ahold of either Lisa or Kelly. Get your questions answered and, and. And I'm, I'm assuming we're going to have to have a board approval to, to put this in place. Is that correct, Lisa?
This was the insurance committee said, so, I'm sorry, what was, what'd you address to me?
That we would have to have board approval in order to implement this? Yes, okay.
Yes.
So once, once all the questions are answered and, and we're, we're ready to roll, then we can get it up and going, okay?
Personnel board?
What I was just gonna say is, there's kind of the tax savings component.
No, he's not here.
Also got, from my perspective, you've got a lot more people, like a higher percentage of people that are gonna have those Cigna plans, those cancer coverages. Because the people that don't want those kind of coverages now are because they didn't want to pay for them usually. So if you've got eighty or ninety percent of your employees that have cancer insurance that God forbid somebody's gonna need it. Or a heart attack, stroke or accident coverage, that they, maybe they didn't have that before. Now, if they do have it, they can actually double up on it. So if they have an Aflac already, they can have the Cigna and pay on top of the Aflac.
So our approval is just going to allow you to offer that to our employees basically. And that's all, it's not anything that's mandatory or anything else. So it's just a, okay.
And I will say that I've done this with three other counties, one, or no, I'm about to do my third county. Rawlins County down in Kansas, Atwood, Kansas, and I've done it with Kiowa County, East Colorado, and Wallace County in Sharon Springs. But nobody in Nebraska did as far as counties.
Well, we could be the pioneer.
I did roll it out with the Village of Moore a couple of weeks ago and we had ten out of eleven.
And where are you from?
And I actually live outside of Denver. But I come up, come up here pretty often. They were worried about how often I would show up, but I would.
He keeps bringing donuts.
I keep bringing her food. And I brought him food too.
Normally it's, you come more until you get the initial sign up, but then it seems like less.
Well, with this bunch, they're gonna have a lot of questions to get you here if you bring food every time.
Yeah.
That's all, that's all I'm saying. If, if, if they know that that's coming along with it.
I just know that Gary Baker is a great place to get.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, anybody else have any questions or Will?
I just wanted to make a comment because I'm hearing questions over here. And from what I, I've sat through the insurance committee presentations of this. And I know Steve Barrett is on my insurance committee, Mark Overman's on my insurance committee, Ken's on the committee, along with who else? Who's our employee? Oh, Nancy, Nancy Leach. And the, they've all been receptive as an additional program that we can offer. Correct, Steve?
Yes.
So the normal procedure goes through the insurance committee, brought to the board, board for approval, then move on with it.
Right.
Okay. So that's kind of where we're at now. And again, I would suggest if anybody has any questions, contact Lisa. Can they, can they contact you, Will?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Will, Will has your, Lisa has your contact information.
I've got a business card if anybody specifically wants it.
Well, we can get, we can get the number from Lisa. Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
On what you handed out just now, is, is, what's, what's the gross wage you're basing this on? Is that still seventy-three thousand, we've been talking about on this?
Oh, average? That's, that's, what's that proposal? The other, that's the, that's an average number on that net.
You want this, this, this?
Yeah, so that's a, that's an average number on.
So what, what's the average income?
Average income?
Is that, is that the, that's the, okay, what is the average wage you're talking about?
These are the indiv, these are the individuals.
These are our employees.
What is their income?
I don't, I don't have their income.
Well, I mean, okay, I'm just, okay, I'm just trying to figure out what an average income would be with what your base is five.
Seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour? Fifteen, well, and at the time that was drawn, sixteen, seventeen, somewhere in there.
I would just say that there's more than just their salary that's involved in that.
Well, in order to get to withholding, you have to have a certain step up in salary. Like you said, you gotta have a minimum seventeen thousand dollar income in order for this to even engage.
Right. And that's, because we can't pre-tax more than they make.
And I, yeah, but they all make more than that, but I'm just saying, I just wondered what this income number was that you derived this five hundred dollars a month back to the county off of?
So that's based on what their pre-tax total is. What their gross wages is and then.
Withholdings.
Withholdings and then also how they file. Yeah, there's like four or five things that they put together and get those numbers.
So two questions maybe for Lisa on that story and that's, what if we had someone that was, gone for two months, three months? Then I'm wondering how all that would be affected and because simply the payment gets made by them working. Right? And so.
They have to make up the difference.
If they're not working, then yeah, then what?
Because, yeah, we would expect them to pay their, what their portion is, that's a great question. And that would have, that's something I'd have to talk to Will about too.
We would set it up whatever's best for the employees.
Can you put it on hiatus for while a person's on FMLA leave or something?
We can do some of those things. With Attentive, it's not a problem, it's with the Cigna payouts for the coverages.
And the reason they're on FMLA leave, they might be using those benefits they purchased, so. So they might need to keep them going.
Well, if they're using the benefits, they would have to pay the premium, I'm assuming, whether they're here or whether they're not.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah, but that's where the one thousand one twenty-five comes into play, it's like, how does that fit in there?
Yeah, and the way we get our portion of the money is by the, yeah, and so we don't get that payment. If they're not being paid.
Did you have other thoughts?
And so it.
But it's a good question.
I guess, I'd be interested in what the answer's gonna be to that. I guess, when it, when it comes back to us next time.
But wouldn't that be between the employee and, and these guys and not so much the county?
Well, it'd be fine with me.
And I don't think we would be responsible for it, I, I don't think, I might be wrong, but.
Yeah, it's just a matter of, we'd have to make sure the employee, employees are aware of how we handle it.
Right.
Or we can drop them off and then move them back.
Put them back on after, afterwards. Just so that we don't have a liability with it, I think, is that what your concern is?
My concern is that all of a sudden.
Potentially, unless they kept their premiums for that cancer policy or hospital policy.
That all of a sudden that we have a liability in making a payment simply towards that. I guess thirty-five bucks is not a big deal, but.
It's still gonna come out of us because all of those payments come from us.
Right.
But we're gonna be, we change, we change that Cigna bill from time to time. And so it's gonna be kind of one of those things, I find out about that, then we're going back. So I'd be with them and the payroll to lower what's being paid.
I think right now it's more of an understanding that if we have that two or three month leave of absence, that it's either up to the employee or that we drop the coverage until they come back and continue it, that the county's not gonna be responsible for it.
For at least that their portion.
Obviously, that's my concern.
Sure.
And a lot of them still have vacation and sick leave they're using to pay, so just be seamless. A lot of them, not everyone.
Until that's gone.
Right.
And then, but if it runs out, then.
If they're, if they're not receiving a paycheck, if they're not receiving a paycheck. Yeah. I see, I, I see your concern.
And number two, I heard a question over there or a comment about the personnel board.
Which one does personnel board include this?
Does this normally go through the personnel board or does it not?
Insurance decisions don't, to my knowledge.
I don't, I don't believe we've ever discussed insurance decisions.
I think insurance committee and commis, commissioners.
Make insurance decisions?
Yes.
Unless it would change the personnel policy.
No, I find what they're doing, being done that way.
But I'm just saying, if it would change the personnel policy, then you'd put it in front of the personnel board.
Does, does it go on the personnel policy once it becomes activated? It doesn't?
No, no, we don't have anything specified.
No, it's volunteer, it's volunteer per employee. You can take it, if you don't want to take it, nobody's forced you to do it.
We don't put it in our book, and no, that we did put a volunteer policy in effect?
No, that's not included in the personnel policy.
It's put in the policy that you have to work thirty hours a week to be eligible for benefits, and then, then we say, then we have a separate. Set of rules for what our benefits are.
This would be one of those benefits, we would wind up in the personnel board.
But we don't list what our benefits are.
No, and, and, and the benefit is more your concern than it is, or I should say, the, the hours worked are more your concern than anything else.
And I think in our, I think in our interest, it'd be better not to be part of the personnel board, um, decision-making process, it'd be better to stay in our decision-making process.
I, I don't think any insurance has ever been part of the personnel board that I can, that I can remember.
You have any thoughts, okay.
Okay, any other questions, or Will? If not, you better head home before that storm hits, whenever it's coming.
Are we getting one tonight?
We don't know when it's coming. It may be snowing right now, it may be snowing right now, Will, thank you very much, very informative. Very informative, thank you.
Good presentation.
Thank you so very much.
Good job.
Alright, next item is discuss and, and consider, can we take a short five minute before we go, if it's alright with you? Please, it's either that or Mark's gonna run it.
How much snow are we supposed to get, camera?
Less than an inch tonight.
Less than an inch is what I just heard, I know, I've been trying to watch too.
Did you tell me you were supposed to get a previous one?
Not really.
I'm leaving, I'm leaving the recordings, guys.
Doesn't this snow, more than cold?
Recorded on video and the audio.
Caramel, what was the other one?
Some chocolate chip.
What was it?
Some nuts.
This was some chocolate, chocolate.
Chocolate chunk cookie. And toffee con chocolate. Like, I took that girl over there.
Alright, well, thanks for meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
This, this one. They want us, they want us to sign something that we don't have.
Yeah, it's all, kinda big.
Well, it looks good here, let's, let's take a piece of this one, a piece of this one, and let's add this to it, then, then just go ahead and sign it, we'll change it later. I don't think so, Tim. Okay, guys, we can get started again, everybody's back and ready to move. Tyler, you're up, discuss and consider approval of county clerk and county attorney's signatures on the Motorola lease per change order.
Alright, so, uh, basically this is a change order that's specific to, uh, Minutair Melbida, um, Rural Fire Board, and their radio order. They changed up their order pretty late in the process of dual-band radios, so it changed the dollar amounts a lot. So, this will reduce the contract, uh, by twenty-seven thousand, uh, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars, and put them on an amortization, uh, that's in line with all the other subscribers to pay the county. For, I think a hundred and forty.
So I'm assuming they're taking.
Yeah, well, yeah, for a, for a hundred and forty-nine thousand, eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents.
I'm assuming they're taking less equipment, is that correct?
No, they actually purchased more.
They purchased more.
Yep. And then there was some adjustment, uh, again, after they decided to purchase more.
So how much is the county on the hook for on that?
A county should be on the hook for nothing.
Yeah.
We are just the pass-through agency.
It's just in the, in the original contract, it was stated that Motorola, that the county would be, Motorola's the main point of contact for payments.
So we have to do the purchasing then?
Yeah, and then the subscribers then pay us for, for their share.
But they're gonna amortize the payment rather than give us a check?
Potential, it's up to Minutair Melbida could hand us the full payment all at once, we would like that, but, yes, they have the option, option to pay it over seven years, ten years?
That's what we're saying.
We are, but we're gonna pay as much as we can before June thirtieth, so we don't have to pay any interest, I think the county will pay our portion. These other entities may have to use that amortization schedule, but we're still in the middle of it, because we said we'd be the pass-through entity.
And Motorola allowed for payments to be made to them, isn't that true?
Yeah, zero interest, isn't it?
From.
No, no, no interest for the first two years, so coming up here in June is when the torque start began to take effect.
Motorola, and, and we can, we are making the payments to Motorola, we've already gotten one big check from Gearing Volunteer Fire, sitting in my twenty, twen- my, sorry, twenty-nine-ten fund. Waiting until we make this one big payment, it's not due till June thirtieth, or middle of June, so we're not gonna pay it, through the ARPA.
Well, I guess, I guess the point would be is that if we didn't have the money, we could pay it out in payments.
Yes.
But we could hold some of this back, pick up the hundred and forty-nine thousand, or short, this is, this is gonna, this is gonna change our, our, uh, the amount we're gonna pay over the year.
Well, yes and no, but that's not our problem, that's theirs.
Yes, we have to budget another hundred and forty-nine, out of, another hundred and forty-nine out of ARPA, if we're gonna, if we're gonna carry a loan, because we're gonna be paying what you're saying.
No, I mean, they, they have to pay us.
Yeah, but they're gonna amortize, and we're gonna pay the bill now, so we have gotta carry the loan.
We are carrying the loan, but they are paying us the interest and principal.
I realize it, but we still have to have the money to cover the loan if you're gonna prepay on this.
I'm not prepaying their radios. I'm not prepaying any of their radios, because that would be six million dollars, and we don't have that.
No, no, it's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
Hundred and forty-nine is adding on, you're gonna, are you gonna pay any of that?
If Minutair Melbida gives us a check.
Then you'll, you'll, you'll move that forward, you just pass it through.
If, that they have to pay us. It'll be an interesting next seven years, let me tell you. Um, that's why we want ours taken care of, and this all came about because they, we were expecting everyone to put in their orders by, help me Tyler, June twenty.
Yeah, we, pretty much everyone had confirmed, um, August of.
Twenty-twenty-one?
Of twenty-one, and then people made changes, made changes, and then Minutair made a real big change, um, probably May of twenty-two.
So then Motorola comes through, let me finish, let us finish, Minutair, they come through with their last and greatest plan for an order, and Motorola turns around alone, and says, your interest is gonna be almost six percent. For your piece.
On, on just Minutaires?
On Minutaires, we were trying to keep them out of our little agreement, because they were, they didn't follow the rules. The rules to get this low percentage, the zero percent financing, you had to have your order in by.
June twenty.
Twenty-twenty-one.
How did Lyman do, I, I know there was some issue there, are they in, okay?
Everybody else is fine.
As, as far as what I've heard from, uh, Mike or Lyman, plans to pay for theirs with one loan.
That, they're planning to do what?
They, they plan to pay for all theirs with one check.
With one check, okay.
We're looking at City of Minutair's gonna pay for all theirs in one check, I don't know about the other cities, I don't.
I started to say, I'm kinda amazed that Motorola's honored that, but then I find out they're charging six percent interest, so they didn't really honor, did they maintain the price of the radio?
Well, you didn't let me finish the story, but you can.
Oh, well, within this, what they did is they're like, look, okay, you know, it was a real big contract, and so we're just gonna eat that percentage, and we're gonna give you the percentage or the, the interest rate that we gave everybody else.
So they lumped us back in, otherwise, we were keeping them out into their own loan by themselves, because they were so late. Motorola agreed to let them have the, come back with our group, at the lesser percentage.
So did it, did they hold their price of the radios, and just saying, well, that's why they came back in this door then? Because those radios were a lot more money than that, if they had to buy them out, out of that group.
Yep.
Now, what I don't understand is, you said, their order was larger, but their price was less.
Their original order that they put in back in twenty-one was like about ninety thousand dollars. Because they had single-band radios, then they jumped up to dual-band, it pushed up their order to like a hundred and seventy-some odd thousand, and then they reduced it again. Bringing that twenty-seven thousand down, because they got credit for turning in some of the, the radios that they had already received.
Okay.
And so that's how it came down, yes, so they went original, they went up, and then they went down.
So this is going down, basically, what you're showing me here.
Yep, for, uh, twenty-seven thousand, seven seventy-four.
So it's, it's not, it's not, it's not changing.
It's not, we helped them out by, what, and Motorola did too, by bringing them back into our little.
I agree, I, I'm surprised they would do that, you know, that late in the game, because they give us a line in the sand, I thought they'd give everybody one. Well, that's great, if they got it done, cool.
As long as they send us checks every year.
Not the way to play the game, but I'm happy for them.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
So.
Do we need to make a motion?
We do, I need a, I need a motion, and a second for approval of, uh, county clerk and county attorney's signatures on the Motorola lease for the change order.
I'd make a motion to accept the change order presented.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? Please record your votes. All votes are in, I assume it passed?
There you can look now.
Yes.
All, all affirmative.
绿色的，yes, blue, yes, Meyer, Harris, Knappel, yes.
Thank you, alright, thank you Tyler. Alright, uh, under old business, uh, there isn't anything to discuss on the Tenth Street building at this time. We'll move on to public comments, at this point, we will take public comments from anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to the board, anybody? Nobody? Okay, move on to board and staff reports, we'll start with the board.
Tell them what you told me.
Well, I haven't got, I haven't got the staff report yet, but that's okay, come on up.
Oh, board, I'm sorry.
Um, I just wanna let you guys know that tomorrow starts my conversion to upgrade my mapping software. It's gonna take about four days. Tomorrow, I don't really know what to expect yet, I think we have a call at eight o'clock, and we'll go from there.
So you're gonna be down for?
Couple days.
Couple days anyway, yeah.
I'm a little nervous, so.
Don't be nervous, it'll work, it'll work out, it'll work out, Ashley.
Yeah, it's just, we've never done anything this big before, so, um, yeah.
All your eggs are in one basket.
Yeah, so, hoping everything just works, and we are right up, back and running, I did confirm, um, that Beacon will still be up and running, it just, whatever updates tonight, will be there. Um, nothing else will update until we're back up and running, but it will still be usable, and you just won't see anything that is updated, which nothing will be getting updated anyway, so.
Okay, alright, thank you, Ashley. Alright, back to the board, anybody have anything to report?
Well, I went to, uh, the Sergeant Kramer key ceremony in Minutair Saturday. I organized the escort, and then I spoke representing the county, uh, welcoming to the county, and just a really nice ceremony.
Appreciate that, I was, I was invited to go, and I woke up Saturday morning and didn't, didn't need to go anywhere, so. So, Mike, I thank you for doing that for us, I appreciate it, I heard it was well-received.
Well, I've been, I've been working with that organization for the last year, so.
I had a, I had a, I had comments all ready to go, believe it or not, but that's okay. As far as I'm concerned, I've got, uh, this is a busy week, starting tomorrow night and going through Thursday, probably at four o'clock in the afternoon, with meetings and other things that are going on, Mark?
I don't have anything.
Charlie?
Nothing, all the meetings happened this week, so.
Still watching the, still watching the legislature move at a snail's pace, trying to get something accomplished. I don't know, I, I, I think till it's all said and done, they may get through thirty-five or forty bills this year, which is sad, because there's plus ninety-plus that are out there, that need to be something done with. Sad state of affairs, but I've, I've texted several of them and, uh, expressed my disappointment, I guess, in, in how things are going. Anybody else out here, yes, Steve? No, I'm sorry, Lisa's up here.
That's alright, actually, I've heard of him. I see, this is okay?
So with winter, we've had, had a lot of problems getting salt delivered to us on time, so I brought Lisa going up, you know, like this next year's budget. Items that we're gonna, I wanna put in there and stuff, and I told her it'd be really great if we could put up a, some little salt shed. I got some quotes for a salt shed like that, forty-two, or just for that one right there, uh, just for the canvas and the supports, it's twenty-two thousand, and an estimate to put the concrete down on the blocks, I have an estimate for, uh, twenty. Twenty-nine thousand four sixty-three, so for about fifty-three thousand, we can put up a salt shed to store our salt. A couple benefits to that is not only waiting during winter to get salt, because we've been waiting a lot this winter, right until maybe the day before of getting the load, because of all the problems out west, we get salt from two different people, we get from Nebraska Salt and Grain, which it comes out of Kansas. So if I eighty shut down like it was a lot this winter, we don't get it, and we also get it from a local individual here, and he gets his out of Utah, and everybody knows what Utah and all that area's been going through, so we have to get, we get salt that way. Another reason I would, would like to get one of these put up is during, if I buy it during the summer months, during the off-peak, I can save close to ten bucks a ton buying it. In a normal year, we use about two-hundred-and-fifty ton, this wasn't a normal year, we doubled that, we did over five-hundred ton.
We're just, we're just covering it at work, Steve, I, you know, I don't.
We just, uh, set it on the ground, that's all we have, we don't have any covers for it, I'm like, drew a little map here of, uh.
Is that, is that an option, rather than actual structure like this?
Well, the thing is, that you would wanna watch, is we could get potentially in trouble when the press is gone, with all this leaching into the ground, because it will kill the grass and the trees if it leaches out.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah.
I just printed off a Google picture, and you can see how the salt in the shop there has kind of leached out, from rain, you know, you get a downpour, it runs out on the grounds, it puddles, and, and does that sort of thing. So this would be, just be a way to help, uh, store it, keep it out of that, that area.
So if you can buy it, you're, you're, you're gonna save ten, ten bucks a ton, you said?
Yes, ten to twelve bucks a ton.
And how many ton are you buying?
Two-hundred-and-fifty.
Well, if we put up a shed, I could, you know, we could potentially fill that, have it for years, because it'll stay forever in there, if we get a year where salt and skyrockets, we don't have to purchase.
You'd have a little surplus, right?
We have to, we love to fall back on it.
Okay.
We buy salt and what we call ice slicer, um, it's a little, it's a little more pricey, um, it doesn't get mixed with the gravel, you see the city gearing, it's the red color, uses it quite a bit more.
What, what is, um, the liquid, um, that's being used with either the state or whoever?
Yeah, that's, yeah, it could be a salt brine is what they. That's, yeah, it could be a salt brine is what that is, just regular salt brine, which is salt, it goes in a machine and mixes it in a percentage and just sits in a storage tank. Or they use what they call man chloride, they also call it apex. The apex is what you see on like, in early mornings when it's real humid, the road looks like it's wet because it's real wet, that's what that apex looks like. Um, they use the apex because it's supposed to be really good for like twenty, thirty below, um, grain or salt brine.
That, you said that's what the state uses?
Yeah, yeah. The state's kind of what they, I think, mostly use.
Wet gravel?
With the windshield.
They're pretty much liquid anymore just because they have what they call a no tolerance.
Kind of opposite, but do, do they do that as a preventative measure also? The only reason I say that, we were in Sydney Friday night and came back east way. Uh, and there were, it, it wasn't snowing, it was foggy, but there wasn't any, any precipitation, but there were several trucks that were out spreading. Well, I don't know what, it looked like a sand truck, I mean, we, we went by it kinda fast, but. We don't, we, we don't do any of that, do we?
No, the sand would be a preventive thing. You can use the liquid as an, in a preventive form. When I was there, we never had much luck with it, I'm not much of a believer in that.
Yeah.
It works really well after it's in the suns out.
So we don't do much until we actually have a problem, whether we've got ice or snow or whatever it is then, okay, gotcha.
Then we put down the salt, the sand. The, the sand we get is from Campbell or Simons, it's the state's effect, you know, deice gravel is what it's called, we mix it with the salt. Usually the ratio of four to one, maybe three to one if it's really cold out. That's what we use, we don't have the capabilities of using liquid. So, um, I brought this up purely just budget purposes and Lisa had mentioned that she had some money that she could.
She has money?
Lisa always, Lisa always has money. She's got a bag in her.
We have some, I mean, I guess he also brought up the Ca- City of Gearing has one of these down in their lot just to the south of ours. Our roads building. Um, yes, we do have some funds and capital improvement because Steve did not budget for that this year. If, and I thought he should bring it to you to get that approved. Or to, for your thoughts.
Does that include erection on that cost you gave?
Yes, yes, so for the fifty three, it'll be putting that building up, it'll be pouring the pad and putting the canvas building up, it'll be all erected for that price.
You're facing it south, pretty much.
Probably to the east, maybe.
And, and, and how much will a building like this hold? Or, or what's your proposal anyway?
Oh, I don't think it's a couple thousand tons.
Really?
Does it say right there?
It's seventeen foot high, the, just the fabric part is seventeen, we're gonna go two blocks high like that, which was a two foot, so it's gonna be twenty one foot high. So, you know, if we really wanted to pile it in there, we could.
Well, can you pile it against the fabric?
I would recommend not doing that, but we're gonna try to keep it, you know, tapered to the block. You can go higher up on blocks and that one there if we wanted.
Right.
And get it higher to do that, but I don't know that we need to go that far, you know. For an easier year, we use two hundred and fifty ton, this year was an extreme year, the five hundred ton, you know. If we fill that up.
That'll barely hold five hundred tons, at ten foot high.
Yeah, ten foot, about fifteen foot.
So you're, you would be putting the salt in there?
Seven, seven hundred foot high.
Yeah, but you can only fill a ten foot average, till you bring it into the wall.
You see one of these on the way to Cheyenne.
Right.
Yeah.
Off the interstate.
The state puts a lot of these up there, you see them all over the place.
There's one right here at the Harrisburg Junction, isn't there, and then there's some in Wyoming as well.
They're very hot.
Yeah, they're, and there's some private sector people doing it for grain storage and whatever, but, so when you you would, you put the salt in there only and then you mix it with the sand just prior to using it?
Yeah, yes. And that's how we do it now is, you know, when the salt pile gets down small enough, or gets, starts getting down, we kind of try to foresee the weather. We order, so we don't have a bunch of salt sand sitting out in the yard, but, you know, that, this year has proved to be very inconvenient because.
So with so- with something like this, you can store it for as long as you want?
You store it, it's gonna stay in there, it doesn't go bad.
Yeah.
It's gonna be there to use.
I got you.
Prices go up or down, if they go sky high, we can, we'll need it for a year, then we don't have to order, you know.
Okay.
So. I think it'll save money in the long run, it'll pay for itself.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, at, at ten bucks a ton or whatever we're doing, we can. It will eventually pay, it will eventually pay for itself.
Leaching into the ground there, you know, at some point, somebody's gonna you have yards right there on the west side of us with trees.
Budzyczek will come out and, and talk with you about it, slap your hands, is what he'll do.
Lisa was good, thought it was a great idea and good, but that you just thought before we did it, we oughta bring it to you guys to.
I, I, I think.
Steve, if you can, I think you oughta go a little better. Cause you're not, you're gonna be lucky to get five hundred ton and you're at an average of ten foot high, you're only gonna get short of five hundred ton.
That's three blocks high and the blocks are.
I think you should go wider though if you can, I don't know, what do they use to go with on those, are they?
That's pretty standard, it was a forty two by forty eight, yeah, so. You can get them with the front, with the door, this is just gonna be three sided, it'll have an open face just like that. You can get them to where you have an overhead door to go in there, but I don't know that we need to spend the money for that, right, just, we can just have it.
Maybe down the road, we could put another one in Mitchell or something or wherever, so you could, so you could, you know, compound that amount, at least get started.
I like the idea, actually, I, I do too.
It's a start, I guess.
You're seeing a problem, so what do we need to do? Bring it back and vote on it, or what do we need to do?
I don't think you have to vote on it.
I don't think so because it's under the.
It's, it's, it's still in your budget.
Oh, it's gonna be in.
It's not in the budget.
It's in the capital improvement, okay.
Do we have to vote to take it out of capital improvement or not?
Haven't had to in the past, no. We had, we've used capital improvements for some building things we don't come to.
I'm good with it, whatever.
I just thought it was big enough that maybe we better let you know what's going on.
Anybody, anybody have a concern with it?
Not I.
Okay. Let's get it done then, very good. Alright, any, anybody else in the staff, anything gonna report?
I did, I have a couple things. Um, number one, or did you have something?
I just wanna let you know that we had a public tax sale this morning. We had a hundred and thirty seven people registered. Um, if we get more people registered next year, we are about out of space in this room and we may have to open another location. According to Jay, when they were setting up, he thought that we were probably over the fire capacity limit up here in this room, which I don't know what that is exactly, but we have firefighters here. So, um, we have, I, I took four hundred and ninety six parcels down there, I'm guessing we sold probably about three hundred and seventy five. But I will have final numbers for you later in a couple weeks.
How many, how many of those registered were representing interests outside of the state of Nebraska?
Um. I don't, you know, a lot of our investment companies have addresses in Nebraska, like US assets, a large company, I'm just a national company. But what they send us, coming out of Nebraska, so we have some smaller investors that come from Colorado and Wyoming. Um, I would say that there were probably maybe fifteen to twenty local investors that came. Um, but most of it anymore are the larger companies. So we make pay a twenty five dollar per seat registration fee.
Okay.
So they are paying to be here.
They can walk.
No, they, they're just saying that they, you know, are.
Everybody pays to be here.
Everybody pays to be here, but then those companies pay, those companies then pay people to represent them here.
Yes, they do. Like, there's a group that comes out of their address is out of Lincoln, but they pay the City of Gearing, Fire Department, two thousand dollars to come, so that's why we have a lot of City of Gearing employees and Fire Department employees, and they play, pay a donation to the Fire Department every year.
To fill the seats?
Interesting.
And they give them specific instructions on which ones to bid on and which ones not to bid on?
They do.
And you still do it in a order and whatever?
We go round, rub and hide on a, we start with the highest parcel and then it goes all the way down to.
Right.
So, um, when we get like less than two hundred dollars, a lot of times they pay.
They stop, yeah.
So. We did sell one that was like five dollars and paid eight cents.
There you go.
Okay. Alright, Lisa?
I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask, how do, how do they get assigned to their seat? Is that part of?
I use a random number generator, and I assign the numbers before the sale just because it saves time and having everybody draw a number as they're scanning.
Yeah, okay.
My husband was number ninety eight.
And so he was.
Yeah, he was back there somewhere, my sister-in-law was number twelve. So, anyway, and she worked for an agency, so I. Alright, I do have a few things. First off, I sent Ken an email today and Phil Kelly. County owns three Lyman parcels. And there are these long skinny little parcels that we, and as we understood through Mr. Kelly, i- if that there's a certain way we sell these parcels. Um, the Village of Lyman had reached out to me one time and said they might be interested in purchasing these. I called the village clerk and she's definitely interested. So, I'll be bringing that to you after Phil tells us the appropriate way to sell to another public entity. So, and we might make more than fifty bucks a parcel like we did through the sheriff, so. Okay, there was that, and my question to you about airport status, I think I told you all that I know they're actively looking for different coverage. I have not heard from Kyle long, and, um, I'm just, you're going to the next meeting, think they'll mention it, or do we need to ask to be on the agenda, or I guess?
I wonder if we shouldn't to get some kind of, come up with some kind of a, at least explain what they're doing, or if they're.
Okay, maybe I'll.
Well, when it
or do we wait?
When it comes your turn to speak, you could ask where, where we're at with it, doesn't necessarily need to be an agenda item.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've, I've not been on that board longer. It's a whole different setup on that board.
Yes, sir.
So the airport is looking for a new insurer?
For their properties.
That we're gonna pay for?
That we're gonna pay for?
No, we're gonna get out of the loop, we're, that's why they're paying, that's why they're looking.
That was what we were asking was not to be, or, or the county's to see, to cover the buildings that were agreed to be covered in two thousand and five.
They would take over all of the, all the building coverage.
Really?
Yeah.
In two thousand and five, we didn't have much.
They were just asked to do that, Nirma had.
It went from, in two thousand and five, the value was like five million dollars for the buildings out there, and now it's like thirty two million dollars that they're asking just for the property, the building, not the contents.
Just the building.
Is what we cover.
We're the only ones.
When there's a hailstorm, that's a lot.
We're the only ones, I think, ha- are the only ones that are covering that, as far as county.
As far as Nirmas is, they cover no other airport authorities in the state.
We're the only ones.
So even though the bond isn't paid off out there, we're gonna get out?
That's our hope.
They'll just make a new bond.
That's what we're working on, yeah, it's.
So. Yeah, it goes back to a question we.
Because it's not statute driven at all, is what we found. It's not a statute that we have to do this.
Well, yeah, I guess, I, I'm wondering why we've been doing it if it wasn't part of a agreement way back twenty years ago.
There was a resolution, and we've just been following it, we didn't question.
We never changed the resolution.
And we didn't question it.
Resolution from the county?
Yes.
That said they would pay it?
That we would pay.
Yeah. It's actually a one-sided resolution, airport board didn't even sign it.
We gave them all the assets and all the rent money comes to them and they don't have any expenses on the insurance. I don't know how many million dollars of them assets, we gave them a farm, we gave.
Also, I just said thirty two million.
That's, that's what we turned over to them, and, and we paid the insurance. Before, we were collecting rents to pay that.
Well, were we ever part of that? We don't know, before there was the airport authority? And it's totally, it's, it's totally allowable for them to manage their property and charge rent for cow pasture.
Hangars or, yeah.
Far around.
Restaurants, whatever they were doing.
They were showing over four hundred thousand dollars of income on rents from last year, from what I've watched on their audit last, last meeting.
Yeah, it makes you go.
They should be able to handle fifty thousand dollars worth of insurance, because we get no revenue out of the airports.
This is all part of the discussion that we started probably two years ago. Um, whose responsibility is what? Whether it be roads or, or whatever, and that's when Lisa brought up the fact that Nirma had made the suggestion, we try to get out of the, out of the liability insurance also.
And it wasn't the first time they brought it up.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I guess my only issue would be whether Nirma, whatever Nirma's opinion is, my question is what are we responsible for legally and what was the agreement way back? Whether it be roads or buildings or insurance or whatever else.
You can read the Nebraska statutes and we can show you the resolutions that were drawn up.
That, that plus the conversation that, that again started probably two years ago is to who's, who's taking care of, there, there's one road that runs back to, to, uh,
FedEx.
FedEx. That was in question, whether we're supposed to take care of it, who's gonna take?
As far as road maintenance.
And that, yeah, and that's, those are all the, all the things that we've been asking to try to get some clarification on.
Anyway, airport status, so we'll get ahold of Kyle and you, you go to the meeting, but.
Is Kyle gonna go to the meeting or do you want him to go or?
I will, I will get ahold of him and see what he suggests.
I don't know that we need him to be there until they come back with some kind of resolve.
I don't think you need him, I just need to keep him in the loop, because we asked him for some assistance.
And Kyle's helping us?
Yes, he's, he's the one that's researching that resolution, the original agreement, all, all the other things.
And we went to him because Phil Kelly said no, because his partner in the law firm represents the airport. So, we, we sought assistance elsewhere.
Yeah, good.
Okay. Other than that, two other things, um, we put, my department put out harassment training for employees to take and I, I don't know what percentage were done, but we have none from any of you. Of having to log on and do this harassment training, so we would ask that you start looking through those emails.
Did you, did you send the link or something out, did you?
To the Nirma sites, and we will start going department by department trying to get everybody signed up, but it'll a lot of the employees have done it, Kurt had a group watch the harassment training this weekend in here, so.
I think I'm alright, I haven't been harassed yet, so it's good.
Would you, would you send that to get, I don't remember seeing it, Lisa, I'm sorry about it.
Okay.
It was a long time ago.
Yeah.
I think, I thought they've updated a couple times, so. Comes from Nirma, it doesn't come from us particularly, it's online, so I will. And evaluations, we have a couple of you that have some emails of your people that we've needed for some time, so if you would please get those cut out. That would be very helpful.
You know who they are?
I do, who do you have?
Okay.
There you go.
Where are they now?
Hmm?
What are they?
Evaluation.
Employee evaluations.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, I know. Did Kim send it to me?
Probably about three times at least. Or she didn't, I'll tell her to send it again.
I might as well do them both pretty soon, I guess, I'll, one after the other, I guess, the other one's gonna be due before I get this one done.
Yeah.
Another one they need to do is the NIMS one hundred.
Oh, yes, and the NIMS, Tim Newman will be, we gotta get him into a meeting to talk about NIMS, because we don't have commissioners caught up on NIMS. I assume Mr. Blue is.
We have one commissioner with the NIMS.
I've taken, I've taken several too.
I was, I would assume that you have, is there any way to find out your certificate or something?
I think he's, I don't, are you kidding me?
He's got you on the list, has not though, so we need to talk to Tim.
I've taken.
We need to talk to Tim, yeah, I would.
Yeah.
I've taken, taken a lot of NIMS courses, a lot of NIMS, and I, I talked with him about that, he said, I think you're okay. I said, okay then.
What about you, Mark?
I'm, I'm definitely not okay.
Not being mayor? Would you have had to maybe take a name?
I don't know.
I may have way back then, but do those count?
Anyway, okay.
I'm not sure, all my hospital ones did, so when I took them there, so, kinda there you go, I think Charlie had takes them there, but we need to.
Your call, question, Mike.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've had my doug for years, I've, I've done three hundred, four hundred.
Just another thing.
I'm ready to.
Anyway, everybody's tired.
Specialize now.
Okay, anything else? Any other staff?
I don't have anything.
Alright, we already discussed legislation, so therefore, we're adjourned.
Black hills on that line they're putting in out there by Steve. We had this. They look, same. Black and white.
I haven't got any color, any bites or.
I was wondering, you know, do we have?
One, and then, see that green line is different.